Taking the chance to do, um, like lay up here.
Criminals. There are things that parents can do that can end up in criminal liability, sir.
Yesterday, I think it was eighteen oh one to help us.
I have no idea because I don't know all the facts of all of that. Thank you. Possible, but let the chief know the details, whatever he knows.
Roy and I did.
Thank you.
Don't pay attention to that card. Somebody put their name on it.
Yes, I will. She asks about you all the time. How you doing?
Roy is saying he likes to yell at me.
She's gonna start coming to meetings.
Who was that?
She was saying that three months ago.
I know who that is. You're supposed to get.
Duh, with that statement.
You never there, buddy.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Take credit.
Just tell me what you want me to do.
I gave it to the mayor.
Man, the damn ash bombs is in war three.
Whatever you need on.
I've been telling people they was in war two. I mean, war one. All that upset. I don't care. I was great telling me. Shit, I was telling them this morning. Oh, that's Chuck's voice. Be this long, this too much. Have to do this without the time. Too much.
You, sir.
Good.
Man, who keeps messing with my, see?
Them commissioners when they come.
Somebody sitting in my chair. Messing my chair, bud.
And then they had the police graduation, I mean, ceremony in here.
Chair, we'll call the December seventh, twenty twenty-one meeting of the city council to order. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Clerk, if you please call the roll.
Do. Alderman Redpath.
Here.
Alderman Gregory.
Here.
Alderman Williams.
Here.
Alderman Phil Genze.
Here.
Alder, won't you, Moment Purchase.
Here.
Alderman DeCenso. Alderman McMenamin.
Here.
Alder Woman Connolly. Alderman Donlin.
Here.
Alderman Hanauer.
Here.
Mayor Langfelder.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, a quorum is present. And Mr. Mayor, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank Dottie Washington, an employee in the city clerk's office who's retiring after thirty-two years. Congratulations. Best wishes, Dottie and Willie. Have fun in retirement. Thank you, Mayor. Where's she at?
Are they here, Mr. Clerk?
She was here all day, Alderman, but, um, a little concerned with the COVID stuff, so.
Well, congratulations to her. She's done a great job.
Yep.
She's been here as long as I have.
Uh, today also, um, marks the eighty-eighth anniversary of Pearl Harbor, and there's a remembrance ceremony out at the Elks Lodge, which we appreciate, along with the State of Illinois Department of Veterans Affairs. And I'll just read a, um, brief comments, uh, that was put on the program. It just says, on December seventh, nineteen forty-one, Pearl Harbor, on the island of, oh, uh, oh, uh, I know I mispronounced it. I, what was that?
Oh, wow.
Very good. Hawaii was attacked by the Japanese Imperial Navy. The surprise attack was comprised of three hundred and fifty-three Japanese aircraft. The assault, which lasted less than two hours, claimed the lives of more than two thousand four hundred and three people, wounded one thousand more, and damaged or destroyed eighteen American ships and more than three hundred airplanes. Eighty years later, we gather to reflect on this day that will forever be remembered as the day which we will live in infamy, and to honor the memory and courage of those who served on that fateful day and each day forward. So I'd ask for a moment of silence to remember this day and keep them in our hearts and, uh, and carry it on to educate our young people as we move forward together. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mayor? Or on the side?
Alderman Donlin.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, and I appreciate that remembrance, uh, of Pearl Harbor. On a much lighter note, although not quite eighty years ago, today is, uh, our colleague, Ralph Hanauer, his birthday, so if you could wish him a happy birthday.
Seventy-one years old.
Sometimes when I'm sitting up here, I feel like I'm eighty, I'll tell you. Thank you.
And we do have a couple of presentations. The first one is, uh, Justine Peterson with the microloan program. So if, uh, Galen Gendolfi, Tristan Brown, and I think Denise Shields want to come forward. I think they passed out. I had a handout for everybody.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. It's a pleasure to be here this evening. Um, we're embarking upon, uh, essentially going into our new quarter of, um, the Springfield COVID Recovery Small Business Loan Fund. It was launched in July, um, and since July, we've been able to close on twenty-one transactions totaling just under three hundred thousand dollars. And, um, we look forward to where we're going in, uh, in, in twenty twenty-two. Currently, in the pipeline, we have about seven transactions totaling a quarter of a million dollars. The entire loan fund is actually capitalized at two million. Justine Peterson is accessing over a million dollars from the U.S. Small Business Administration SBA Micro Loan Program. In addition, we've been able to capitalize from local banks, uh, including the Bank of Springfield, INB, Carrollton, and PNC. Um, we first began our work here in Springfield in September of twenty fifteen. We were able to establish initially the Springfield Micro Loan Fund, and this was also capitalized by local banks and also accessed dollars from the U.S. Small Business Administration. Since our work, um, in twenty fifteen up till to this date, including the COVID recovery dollars, we've been able to close over a hundred and thirty-four loans, um, uh, uh, north of two million in total deployment. And so we're pretty excited about moving forward. We've had a robust referral relationship with the Black Chamber of Springfield. I want to shower accolades to Dominic Watson on being a steadfast and stalwart partner. Also want to give hats off to the OPED team, um, in particular, uh, Davi Rashi has been of great assistance in creating a referral network. And we'd like to look at, uh, in the first quarter of twenty twenty-two, actually having a meeting with, with, with each council member, um, try to strike up a referral network within each respective ward. Heretofore, we've had a fairly egalitarian deployment of funds, um, east, west, north, and south, um, but the more referrals, the better. Um, this evening, I would like to introduce, uh, um, Denise Shields of Miss Kitty's, uh, uh, Chuck Wagon, which is located, uh, in the second ward. And I want to give hats off to Alderman Gregory on actually, um, being very, um, uh, ambitious in terms of referring clients, and we appreciate that. So in a, in a few moments here, I'll have Denise, uh, give her testimonial on her experience with the business, uh, her small business, Miss Kitty's Chuck Wagon. I also want to introduce Tristan Brown, who is our full-time boots on the ground here in Springfield. Um, Tristan has joined us, joined us as a full-time asset-building counselor, and he essentially interfaces with our clients. Um, in addition to small business lending, he provides comprehensive credit consultation. Justine Peterson views credit score enhancement as very central and focus, and focus to our, um, over our, uh, overall mission. Um, we'd like to think that, um, in Springfield, we can think about seven hundred credit score neighborhoods, um, and a seven hundred credit score CD as a whole. So, um, I'll first introduce Tristan and make a few comments, and then we'd love to hear from Denise. Yeah, thank you so much, Galen. So since, um, being hired into the program in September of this year, um, we have made pretty great strides, and one of my main goals was to, um, get the word out there in the community and, um, reach people that really have never heard of us. And I think we're starting to see things in the ball rolling, and we're, uh, really, I mean, the future is really looking bright, especially with, um, what we, I mean, there's even more in the chamber now since this, um, handout was made. We've probably got ten or eleven coming, so, and they just keep coming. So, um, and I wanted to give a shout-out again to the OPED department. They've been very wel- welcoming, and Robbie Doshi has been awesome with referrals and, uh, getting the program up and running. And we're even, uh, currently working on, uh, layering the programs with, uh, the current city and how we can work together and possibly, um, getting funding on where, uh, people might not have it for matching and so forth, moving forward in the future. Um, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Denise Shields, and, uh, I worked with Justine Peterson, Galen Gendolfi since twenty nineteen. And this year, in twenty twenty-one, in July, I started working with Galen, um, to get a microloan. There were certain things that I needed for my trailer, which was, you know, you gotta buy new things because this was a new entity, and I needed help. Um, Galen had helped me build my credit, starting in twenty nineteen, February twenty nineteen, and I have worked, they have worked with me for the last two years. It has been a great experience because I was able to build my credit, um, have a better credit score so that I would be able to get a loan. Um, this year, I wanted to get a food trailer, not enough money, you know, needed a truck, not enough money. So I called Galen. We worked it, he worked it out. I wouldn't say I worked it out by myself, but he helped. And their program has so much. You can, um, they'll work with you to, to debt consolidation, um, build your credit, but you have to step out on faith. You have to be able to want to do some of the work. Um, their programs are, I mean, fi- getting financed and being able to have my own business is a joy. For me to cook for someone, put a smile on your face, make sure you're able to come back, fry you a chicken wing, smile at you, I know you're gonna come back. Get that burger, that quarter pound of burger with those long fries, you'll be back. I just want to thank Justine Peterson just for being in my corner.
Did you bring any free samples?
Come on Sixteenth and Rentals.
Sixteenth and Rentals.
Right, there you go. We need to come by.
She on Sixteenth and Rentals.
Alderman Donlin.
She just answered the question. All this talk of food, I want her to know where to go, so.
Any other questions or comments? Alderman Gregory?
I just want to say congratulations. I'm very, very, very excited to hear that, and, and, and hopefully not only on Sixteenth and Rentals, but we, I want to see this thing all over, all over the city of War Two and, and, and at various events. So, you know, just round, you know, I want to give you a round of applause because I think this is big for our community. Uh, things like this, success stories like this, um, um, is, is really big, and there's so many people out there that's, that's really needs just a, a little help, um, um, you know, really starting their businesses, and this was the point of this.
The joy, the, the whole joy of, of having my own business is.
Can you step up?
I'm sorry.
So they can hear you on TV.
The joy of having my own business is, um, I'm serving you something that, um, will make you smile. I like to, um, I like to see a smile on your face. You, just like you go to the store and you buy you some clothes and you know how you feel good. If you buy a twenty dollar pair of pants, it's not so hot. You buy a fifty dollar pair, you know, you can rub it a little bit. So when you come to Miss Kitty's Chuck Wagon, you know, think about that twenty, you think about that fifty, because you're gonna get that five dollar holler.
So you can put some weight on me. You can put some pounds on me.
All right, I'm gonna, I'm gonna be there to see you.
You're gonna, it's, it's, I mean, I have people that, um, tell me, you know, I never had a burger like this before. You know, I, um, what did you do to that chicken? I put my love in it, and I gave it to you. That's all.
Awesome.
And thank you very much for, uh, Justine Peterson, work with the Black Chamber of Commerce, but as importantly, the, uh, community banks to make this microloan program possible because they provide the gap financing where you might not traditionally, uh, be approved through a bank, but everybody working together fills that gap. So we appreciate everybody doing that.
Nice.
Next, we have, uh, any other questions or comments on that? We have, uh, Josh Sabo and Captain Eddie with regards to the emergency overflow shelter. Uh, update on that, please.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
I'm excited to, to kind of share with you some of the progress that's been made. We've, we've really gotten a lot done. I sent around today, I hope that all of you got a chance to look at the, the report. I promised a monthly report, and that's the first one. Um, it starts out on the first page with, uh, some basic stats, and it goes, the second page is actually, uh, um, by numbers each night, who, how many we had in the shelter to show. Um, and then the, the final, and, and I plan on putting this on the website tomorrow. I didn't get to it today, but the final part is, is an overview of the finances. It's the money that we turned in today to the city for reimbursement. It goes down a list of everything that we spent, actually, the places we spent it. Um, and if anybody even wants to see the, the receipts, we've got those to show you as well. Um, but I just wanted to go over some of the great things that have been going on down there since the, the beginning of November. Um, we've got some really dedicated, we, we kind of have this dream team going. I was hoping that, that the new director would be here. He's fantastic, uh, but he was dealing with a, an issue at the shelter about twenty minutes ago, so he may not be here for a little while. Um, but we've got this, this kind of dream team going on with that and a pat, what we call a pathway of hope, uh, caseworker, social worker, that's really getting some stuff done. Um, during the day, we've got a guy named Harold. He's been there all summer, and he, uh, he spends his time making sure people get connected to services. So he has a van. He, he'll take people around. First place he goes is Washington Street Mission in the morning. He starts about seven o'clock hauling people over there, usually three, four trips a day to get everybody over, and, and we get people back and, and all of that. Um, we have a couple employees that are on Monday through Friday from six-thirty in the morning until one-thirty PM, and this is where we do showers, and we do anything that, that they would possibly need during that time, uh, rest if they need it, whatever. Um, these partnerships have been wonderful. One of them is sojourn. They're there on Wednesdays, and they give them the chance to, to talk to them, and that's where things like domestic violence can come out, and they can help them through those kind of things. Um, we have, on Thursday, Thursday through Monday is that, that pathway of hope worker. Um, if you look at the stats, she did, I think, eight birth certificates or eight licenses. Like, it's, it sounds like little stuff, but, um, if you've ever tried to get a birth certificate for somebody who doesn't have an ID, it's, it can be a real challenge. And so you can, oh, six birth certificates. Um, but you can see that these, all these things are, uh, seventy-five showers, lots of stuff. So she's there, uh, from, uh, Thursday through Monday, and then over the weekend, from one to fi- five-thirty, we have employees on. They do the same thing as the morning employees the week before. Uh, they do the showers and, and things like that. And then at night, we, we check them all in at seven. We've worked real hard to work with the other shelters. We've, we've got a good relationship going where we make sure as many people as possible can get to the other shelters, and that's very purposeful. Everything that we do is for a purpose. We, we don't want to get in the bu- business of warehousing people. It's not good for the people. It's not good for the staff. It's not good for the community. And so what we do is we do everything we can to get them connected to other services, because I believe that many of these cases are so hard that it's not something any one agency can help. And so by working together, we can get these people back to a self-sufficiency. So that's what we really, we really strive to do is get people connected. Memorial Behavior Health has been a fantastic partner in this. They've been there, they've actually been there during check-in and everything for a couple evenings a week, and, um, we've been able to connect people with services through them. And so there's just all these really great things going on. There's, in the first month, we see a better place in our community. And so I, I want to thank you guys for supporting this. And, you know, if, in the future, you want to support this in more ways, one of our biggest concerns is housing. I know you've heard that a million times. Um, first, finding landlords that are willing, but also finding the money to be able to house people. And so something just to throw out there, to think about, um, a good investment in the future would be to the COC of some money to do rehousing, rapid rehousing, supportive housing, um, a couple hundred thousand dollars, and that would go a long ways. And I'm not asking for Salvation Army. I'm just saying, because I want to work together with, uh, all the agencies, because that's how we're gonna get this problem accomplished. So, um, does anybody have any questions? I talk really fast. Sorry. Uh, Alderman Gregory.
Gregory.
Appreciate you. Um, thank you, uh, Captain. Uh, I just had a couple questions. Um, I seen it said fifty-five inhabitable. Um, I assume those are people who need to be housed. So if I, if I ask you guys right now, how many houses or apartments do we have, uh, or have we worked out to put people in? Like, i- if we give you two million dollars right now to, to.
Right.
To house these people, do we have fifty-five houses in the market?
We don't. No, that's definitely an issue. And, and we, we've tossed around in COC some ideas of how to remedy that, even like a landlord mitigate, like something, some kind of safety net there for landlords and things like that. Um, that's part of the robust program. I think we'll talk more about it even in the spring.
I appreciate it.
But you're right. Yeah, if, if two hundred thousand dollars was put on the table today, we wouldn't be able to find housing for everybody. But, um, so our purpose right now is getting them ready for that point. We're moving in the direction as if that's what's gonna happen, so that when the time comes, they're ready to go. They've got their ID. They've got their birth certificate. Um, they've, you know, all the services are in place that they can go, so.
Is this, this fifty-five inhabitable, uh, you know, because I, I, I do know, you know, the unsheltered is, is really what our goal is, really trying to, um, navigate them through. Um, are these consistent night stays, these, these fifty-five, or?
Nobody is really, well, very few are, are consistent.
Okay.
Um, we'll see somebody for a night or two, and then not for a couple nights, and then they'll be back.
Okay.
Um, and there's all kinds of reasons for that. E- every case, and that, this, this whole thing is so complicated. It, it's easy to look at the homelessness issue and just think, oh, these people lost their job. Well, yeah, you know, if, if the average person in here lost their job today, they would probably find a couch to sleep on. So there's more to the story, and almost all, these are chronically homeless, and so we, that's why I say we really need to rally around them as a community to help to get things done.
I appreciate you.
Because there's so many multiple problems.
Alder Woman Purchase and Alderman Redpath.
Captain Jeff, thank you. Can you, um, explain the process of how you house these individuals? So if you need to call the other shelters or the other partners, can you go through that process and talk a little bit about that? Because that was concerns from last Tuesday from these emails that we got. So I just want to be clear and have you clarify some things.
Sure. Um, we rely heavily on, uh, Fifth Street Renaissance, Mercy Communities, Helping Hands, um, for the long-term housing. In fact, just this last week, we had, uh, Melissa and Dee, they were chasing down a couple of our guys during the day, um, because an opportunity came available, and one of them took it and one of them didn't. Uh, but this, so it's, yeah, the, the process is, part of the process is getting them to these other programs. That's why we, every night, we, we try to talk people into going to Helping Hands. You go to Helping Hands, that's where you, that's your doorway into the system. And so if there's any kind of barriers such as IDs, that's, we'll help them get them so they can get into that. Um, it's not as often that people in the shelter have the housing opportunities. Um, we need to get them to the programs where they will. We do get them on coordinated entry and things like that. That's the first step in the process. And I, I think we've talked about coordinated entry before in here, just, uh, the idea that they're ranked by needs, and, uh, so we want to, we want to get the people in there that are, are, you know, they're the hardest to rehouse because they get higher on the list and they can get the supportive housing.
And also I know that too, um, what happens if I try to attack you while I'm in there, um, in the facility? What happens then?
That's a good question. Yeah. Um, we try everything we can to be low barrier. Our first and foremost concern is to keep people alive. Um, however, if it gets really, uh, dangerous like that, first, Memorial Behavior Health is really good at stepping in there, and sometimes they can resolve it. Uh, the second is the police department. Um, and then for the most part, unless there's an actual weapon involved or whatever, it's not a forever ban. It's, you, you can come back when you come in and make a plan with, with the director. So we're really trying hard to do everything we can to be as low barrier as we possibly can. Um, but yeah, there are, we do have to keep our staff safe as well, and the other residents. It's not just about the other staff.
And my last question is, um, just for clarification, because I know the answer to it, but where do we go to see the monies that are spent?
Uh-huh.
Is that the website?
Yep, if you go to our website, uh, TSA Springfield dot org. Um, I'm putting it on there, so, uh, the, this is the first money that we're turning in that we've spent, so, and I'll put that on there tomorrow. But yeah, you can see it there.
And then also it comes in a monthly report to, to us as well, too.
Yep, that's the plan.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. I really appreciate your support.
No problem.
Alderman Redpath.
Captain, um, the, the governor's rolled out a plan to, for rental re-assistance and, um, to help landlords and tenants. Does any of that money fold into something like this that we can tap into to help with the homeless housing?
Yeah. Fifth Street Renaissance is, uh, our local recipient of those funds, so they, they're, if you know landlords or tenants who are in need of that assistance, uh, Fifth Street Renaissance is, is working to.
So they're, they, it will help us to, uh, uh, help the homeless try to find permanent housing?
Absolutely.
Okay, great. Thank you.
And then, uh, last week, if you could clarify, um, some statements were made, uh, given the impression that people weren't allowed into the emergency shelter. And I'm not sure if it was a timing thing, because I don't think, uh, your hours, you, as you said, you try to get them to the other supportive housing entities. I take that that's before seven, and then so your doors don't officially open till seven. Is that correct?
That is correct, yeah.
Or if you could shed some light on that, because, um, there's a feeling that you weren't allowing anybody in or rejecting some individuals that were trying to access the services there.
Sure. We've been, uh, tweaking the process as we go. The way the process very, began in the very beginning was that it was overflow and that no one would be allowed in until we filled the other shelters. Um, what we found is that, that made a very dangerous situation. Um, people were very unhappy with that. Um, and the two nights that, that were, that we didn't take guys, it was because of that. Once we got through that, the, the police were there. They were trying to defuse the situation. It was just a really, really messy, messy situation, and it was dangerous. And so we've adjusted, we, we then went to, uh, like, picking people randomly to go over. Um, that also did not work. And then now we are at encouraging people to go over. And so we're doing everything we can to encourage them again, because we truly believe that getting into those programs is where they need to be. But, um, yeah, we've done what we can to make sure that doesn't happen again.
So you're allowing them in now and then assessing them and encouraging them to get the supportive housing that be in a greater detail of what you can offer them at the emergency shelter?
Yes.
And I just wanted to, uh, add to that, that Captain Jeff and Josh have been very open, transparent, and accessible. Um, from the emails we received, I know that we're able to call you on your cell phone. Uh, when that situation took place, I asked people to call me as well, and I just want to make sure that that's clear, that they're able to be contacted if people are not being let into the shelters, so that they can rectify the situation, too.
Very good. Any other questions or comments? Alderman Redpath.
Josh, could you answer a question for me? I, um, tell me, tell me what your role is. I mean, I know that you oversee the continuum of care, but tell me what your role is. So, so when the, when the, when the blame comes down or the, uh, the, the praise comes down, are you the guy we blame, or?
Yeah, all of it, sure.
Tell me, tell me how that works.
Sure.
The continuum of care is our local organizing body that's designated by HUD. So we, that body, every community in the country has one of those, and the, the real goal of it is to, to pull everybody together to work in the same direction, to set strategy, and to really work towards ending homelessness. Um, our continuum, that work has been done since nineteen ninety-seven by agencies working together to, to do all of these requirements by HUD on the side, and then, um, for the first time, uh, with the help of the city and the community foundation, my role was created, and I was hired in twenty twenty, uh, to really help coordinate all of those efforts of the continuum and try to pull people together, set strategy, get everyone working in the same direction. So in this scenario, um, I commend Salvation Army for stepping up to meet this need and the work they're doing. And so our role is really to try to provide all the support we can around them. So we've, we set up a weekly meeting with all the partners, all the, all the shelters to say, how's everything going? What, what do we need to improve on? How can we work together to keep improving services? And so just kind of coordinating that, pulling that together with the hopes of, again, expanding services. That's really what's needed across our community, whether it's housing or street outreach. Basically, every, every intervention in our community needs to expand, so. And just so you know, this wasn't to bring, come up here and say, we're gonna blame you, okay? That's not how this works. The, the thing is, is there's a misconception with the public on who's in charge of this thing and how's this working. I know the continuum of care works as a group, and, and, uh, it, it's improved.
I know the continuum of care works as a group and, and it, it's improved a hundred percent from the past. Not to blame anybody about how it went in the past, but we had to work through these tough times to get to this point. I'm really proud of the way you all are working together and putting us together because it's very important to our community. I've seen the difference and, and, and we all have struggles with it. Everybody's sometimes saying, I don't like that, the way that's going or I don't like the way that's going. And they don't understand the obstacles that are thrown in your path every day. So, thank you for what you do, Captain Eddie, thank you and all the people for continuum of care for all you do for our community. It's very important to us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Alderman McManlon.
Similar comments, congratulations to everyone that's working on this at the city government level. We've never offered the extent of these services ever before. We've now got a twelve-month low-barrier shelter where the other, if, if the difficult clients cannot be accommodated elsewhere, they, they can come to the city shelter. What we've heard tonight is an emphasis on services, not just sheltering, but services so that folks can improve themselves in, in the long term. We've heard about coordination between the shelter and all the other agencies out there. And in particular, Josh, you know, there's, we've never had this extent of interaction between the shelter and the continuum of care and a long-term plan. So that's all real positive. And again, we've got very difficult clients we're dealing with. And sometimes, you know, bad stories get out there, which we have to explain and we have to be patient on this council and, and hear it from those that are responsible for what's going on. And then we can maybe have a greater comfort level here at the council about all, all of this. So thanks for everyone that's, that's involved in this.
You know, the other thing too that I should say is Alderman Purchase is part of that Tuesday morning meeting. And that's where we discuss those difficulties. So often she will have insight into those things that you hear.
And I've also taken on, I said it to the mayor and everyone last week, that if any of my colleagues have concerns, to please let me know so that we don't break the, having so many aldermen or alderwomen on that call at one time. So I'm more than happy to share that information with them on Tuesdays.
And please reach out to us if you have questions, concerns. I mean, we're, I know Captain Eddie and I'd be happy to talk with any of you.
No, we're just going to ask for her report.
Alderman Williams.
Oh, yes, so earlier you, you referred to some opportunities that came up and you had to go find the two guys and one accepted and one. What type of opportunities?
Housing.
Housing opportunities. So the one that, that did not accept, so what happens after that?
Back in our shelter tonight.
He just continues on and
Yep.
Is there a reason why he didn't accept?
I'm sure he gave a reason, but it's hard telling what the reason is.
Okay.
It's unfortunate, yeah, he needs it.
Thank you.
Unfortunately, it's humans we're working with and you can't force anything.
Thank you.
We'll keep trying.
Alderman Purchase.
Do you know of those forty vouchers, how many has been fulfilled?
The thirty-five emergency housing vouchers.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
We're up to, I believe the last update I got were eleven of those were, were going. And then we're moving into the next phase of that. So our, our hope is by the end of January to have all thirty-five of those in, in use.
And will we get more after that?
We're not sure. If you look at HUD for those emergency housing vouchers, for anybody interested on their website, you can sort of see how those were spread out across the country. The usage rate is, percentage is incredibly low right now. So our hope is to really get folks into those vouchers as quickly as possible with the hopes that maybe they'll make more available to us.
Okay, thank you.
Then if you could explain the day services, how that coordination happens and who's all involved with that? I think that'd be helpful.
Sure. Yeah, we've got Fifth Street Renaissance, they're involved, Washington Street Mission, of course. And then we have the Memorial Behavior Health. They, they do a lot of response during the day. The caseworkers from the Salvation Army that, that aren't specifically for the shelter, Jason and Dee, they do a lot of the work during the day. And then we have our new Pathway of Hope social worker. She does the day work Thursday through Monday. And then we have regular employees that'll be there that can help with showers and things just about every day of the week.
Is there a, because I tell you the shelters close, emergency shelter at certain hours during the day?
It's seven to seven is what we're open. And then across the compound is where we do day services. That's where the, the, the city put in showers last year.
Right.
So it's kind of a big open room with the showers and we have tables and things in there.
Okay.
So try to separate the two services.
I know that's popped up on the weekends where there's places they couldn't go. So we didn't know if there's still a gap in that. And if so, is there a way we can help fulfill that gap of services?
I think there are some, there are some gaps. I think they're, they're pretty insignificant. But also the truth is, not everybody wants to be in the same place all the time. So there's been, in fact, that's why we went to mornings, because we get more people in the mornings than we got in the afternoons. So we're going to remain flexible. When we see the gaps, we're going to try to fill them the best we can. We could still use a couple more employees to, to help do that. But yeah.
And then what's your housing capacity?
We have forty cots set up right now. We have a few more in the back room. Once we start adding them, we're going to take away from the separation. That's important. I think it's really important now for COVID as it starts to rear its head again.
And you can go up to how many?
Whatever the room can hold. I don't, I don't remember what the fire marshal said.
Okay, that'd be important to know.
Yeah.
Because that's been asked. Okay.
I mean, I think that before the room gets to capacity, I think we're going to have more, need to have more staff to help it get to that place.
Right.
So I, if tonight seventy-five people showed up, we'd be in trouble.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Well, really thank you for your service and your supportive services and everybody working together. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you, gentlemen.
And then the last presentation is with the Assistant Police Chief, chief with regards to their crime reduction strategy. I think it's on LPRs and ShotSpotter and anything else.
I'm going to give DC Stunkel a couple minutes just to pass out everything to everybody. Well, good evening, thank you for having us tonight. Today we'd just like to talk about, a little bit about crime reduction, technology and how it all works together. We put it together in a short slide. I know you've already seen a few other presentations, so we'll go quickly through it. Basically, when we started in law enforcement, we started with officers working on the street corner, walking the beat. Times have changed, society has changed, and we in law enforcement have to evolve with the times. While advancements in transportation and technology have taken us from payphones to cell phones, from horses to hybrid vehicles that we currently drive, the commitment demonstrated by each and every one of our officers has not waned. Most of you are aware of our community outreach and our community engagement, which is second to none in any department in state. But you can see, it's not new to the Springfield Police Department. We've been doing it for years, as the pictures here show. As our society continues to advance from technol, from a technological standpoint, so does the evolution of policing. It is imperative that we as an agency and we as a city recognize the necessity to combine traditional policing methods with new technology. While nothing replaces human capital, we have to work smarter. Pre-recession, we had two hundred and eighty-three officers. Today, we have an authorized strength of two hundred and fifty and we're currently sitting at two hundred and sixteen officers. We're constantly asked by society to do more with less, and technology is our force multiplier out there. Working the neighborhoods and community leader, working with neighborhood associations and community leaders and residents is not enough. In order to keep up with changing times, we have to embrace technology. Listed in front of you are some of the key technologies that we feel is essential to serving the citizens of Springfield today and into the future. As you'll see, you'll see license plate readers, ShotSpotter Connect, which is a predictive analytics, ShotSpotter Niven, computer forensics, cell phone forensics, body worn cameras, e-crash, e-citation, field-based reporting. Springfield Police Department was the very major department in the state to fully deploy body worn cameras. We have shown how this technology not only helps hold our officers accountable and produce better transparency for our community, but also serves as an evidentiary tool. E-crash, e-citation and CopLogic. E-crash and e-citation along with our field-based reporting system has freed up our officers to be in the street. We no longer go to the station to write reports. We go no longer go to the station to pull up information for reports. CopLogic is our online reporting system that allows some citizens at their choice to report minor crimes to the police department at their convenience versus waiting for us to respond. ShotSpotter Connect is a predictive analytic tool. It provides officers data-driven approaches. You constantly hear about intelligence-led policing, predictive analytics. That's exactly what this does. It takes historical and real-time data across the city and identifies areas of extra patrol that helps deter and reduce crime. That's what each of those little boxes have. Every eight hours, those boxes update using real-time data and algorithms that are plugged into our CAD record system. It directs officers where to patrol. Each little box, we ask the officers to patrol there for at least fifteen minutes at a time, every shift, every eight hours. Again, every eight hours, those boxes change us to different locations based on real-time data. ShotSpotter, as you will see shortly in example from a recent call, ShotSpotter is shown to be a valuable tool for the Springfield Police Department. It directs our officer to a specific location of gunfire. In fact, within twenty-five meters or eighty-two feet of where the shot came from. Additionally, it provides officer safety information such as multiple gun, multiple gunshots, multiple shooters, what type of weapon is being utilized, such as an automatic or semi-automatic. Our Niven system, our Niven system combines with our ShotSpotter program. And taking us, ShotSpotter takes to the crime scene, helps us locate and pinpoint where evidence is at. In two thousand eighteen, we collected two hundred and seven pieces of evidence, two hundred and nineteen, one hundred and ninety-nine. And in two thousand twenty-four, four hundred and seven. And I should rephrase that, that's not pieces of evidence, that was cases that we entered in a Niven. So that was two hundred and seven cases in eighteen, four hundred and seven cases in two thousand twenty, where we found shell cases that we entered in a Niven. Niven is a ballistic system that tells whether or not that weapon has been used in another crime. For example, it may link a case in Springfield to another case in Springfield or a case in Chicago or a case in Decatur, et cetera. In this example you're about to see from a few weeks ago involving officers responding to a ShotSpotter alert of six shots fired. As you can see and hear, the following. It's not working, Josh, can you hit it? Try it again, see if it plays. Audio's not working.
See what happens when you lose time, chief.
There's a ShotSpotter alert as we speak. Josh, any luck at all? Darlene? All right. I'll set this for you then, since the audio's not working. Officers were dispatched, received a ShotSpotter alert of six shots fired and responded to an area in Ward Six. While en route, you can see by those six shots, this is what the officers see on their mobile device, on their in-car cameras. You can tell the shot, the dots will plot as they go, so you can see the direction of travel. I promise it worked before we got here.
Chuck, could you go over and help him?
He's teasing you.
Is he good with technology?
Good job, Chuck.
I'm going to proceed while they're still talking or trying to work on it. While officers are responding, there's a second ShotSpotter alert for two shots fired. Upon arrival, this is what the officers see. As you can see, there's a gentleman and a victim suffering multiple gunshot wounds laying near the driveway. As you can see here, this is our officers taking life-saving measures and rendering aid. Officers are not only applying pressure, but they're packing the wounds, multiple wounds, and are comforting the, the subject. Tell them it's going to be all right. This is three minutes and thirty-five seconds into the incident. At the three minute and thirty-five second into the incident, the gentleman's able to tell us a suspect vehicle description of who was involved in the incident. Officers immediately air that to surrounding officers. Officers continue to hold pressure to the victim's wound. We're now at four minutes and twenty-six seconds into this incident. They're working at all, any of them? Nothing, Josh? Officers continue to give aid to the victim while other responding officers are directed to utilize ShotSpotter by the supervisor on scene to locate evidence and pinpoint where the shots came from. At the six minute and fifty-five second mark, you can hear sirens in the audio from responding ambulances and fire paramedics that were summoned by police officers. At this time, we finally get our first call from a citizen. The citizen reports that they heard the shots and that the shots came from ten blocks away. They report that the shots came from the area of Fifth and Ash, I'm sorry, Fifth and Laurel. The previous incident shows the impact of the ShotSpotter program and how it can have on saving a life. Officers are on scene giving aid to the victim for four and a half minutes before a nine-one-one call is even placed. While officers are on scene, they are able to obtain suspect information and provide it to officers. In this case, officers were familiar with the suspect and responded to their residents and took them into custody. Because of the quick response of officers, officers were able to not only recover the firearm and arrest the subject, they were able to render aid and save this young man's life. The handgun that was recovered was placed in our Niven machine. Our shell cases were placed in our Niven machine that linked this case not only to other cases in the city of Springfield, but a case in Chicago. We are currently activate, actively investigating one of those investigations and we will have a positive resolution in the near future. Patrol officers who work this area were familiar with the area. And while they had that information, we were able to resolve it. But if they didn't, this is where we believe the LPRs can come into place. We had a suspect vehicle description given to and by the victim. We were told that a minivan and a specific color minivan was involved in the incident. We had no direction of travel, but with LPRs mapped out the way we have them in certain areas, we have a time because of ShotSpotter, we have an exact location. We have a direction of where the shots were coming from. That tells us the direction to look and start looking. We could have went to LPRs, used those LPRs to capture any of those specific color vehicles, specifically, I'll just say hypothetically, a red minivan in that area. That's how LPRs and ShotSpotters work together. LPRs not only collect vehicle information, they collect other valuable information that can be used such as time, location, as well as bicycles, as well as people on foot, pedestrians. It provides vital information to us. Bottom line is that ShotSpotter serves as our ears on the community twenty-four seven in the areas that it's deployed. LPRs will serve as our eyes twenty-four seven. And while I would love to have two hundred and eighty-two officers again, I know that's not going to happen. And for the cost of ShotSpotter and LPRs combined, I can get three point eight officers. That's not even one officer per shift. We can't replace the value of twenty-four seven coverage that this technology provides to us. As I stated earlier in the presentation, technology pieces have been discussed tonight, are utilized by our officers and our civilian personnel to keep them safe and carry out our mission. These tools will not replace the expert training committed to officers are out there. But we have to embrace technology and move faster and farther. There's several other pieces of technology we didn't talk about here today. And we've been blessed that in my tenure as chief, that we have come from the Stone Age. When I came chief, we were still handwriting reports. We didn't have any kind of field-based reporting, any kind of e-citation. It's due to your support of the Springfield Police Department, our mission, we are able to get there and take that next step. We value all your support. Another thing, I can't think of a, a crime today that doesn't involve some type of technology, whether it's cell phone technology, computer technology, mobile technology. We didn't have a, a cell phone or a computer forensics unit. We now do because of your support to help us do it. Every crime, we just made three arrests involving school threats today that took that vital information that the computer forensics unit was able to provide us. We have to continue to work with technology, embrace technology as a force multiplier as we move forward. I can't put a value on the life of this young man that would have died. No one called, we would have responded ten blocks the other way if it weren't for ShotSpotter technology getting us there today. If we wouldn't have had his testimony as to the color of the van or whatever, we could have checked that immediate area though. By time and location, by an LPR located a block or two away of every car that went through that direction, we would have had information. It would have been a harder step, more to narrow down. It would've been a harder step, more to narrow down, but we could've done that. It's a valuable tool that we have to look at. And each piece of technology doesn't work independently, it works together. You know, we look at the predictive analytics part about where do we deploy our people? Where do we use resources? We have limited resources, so where's the best place to put them in order to deter and reduce crime based on computer algorithms that help us from over-policing the neighborhood? Takes the subjectivity out of it. That's all because of you folks and how you've invested in the police department. And that's all we're asking you to do here tonight, is invest in the police department with the LPR technology to help us continue to grow. Again, things are just different. We no longer draw reports or draw crime scenes, we no longer sketch them. We've progressed from that to using video and cameras. Now we're to three-day, three-D scanners that not only accurately and precisionly detail the crime scene, but it takes the measurements for it, so there's no more handmade measurements where there could be errors. We just have to continue to embrace technology as we move forward, and we thank you for your support tonight. Any questions?
Chief, I'm very happy about the situation with the ShotSpotter, because it did save a life. I've not been a fan of ShotSpotter because I thought that technology was not worth what we were spending on it. In that situation, the officers who responded to the scene, it was good that they had the experience that they had and they had, they had passed confrontations with those people, so they were able to use their experience there too, so. But if we didn't, if we didn't put this LPR system in, I probably would've posed the shotSpotter because I don't think it's worth it, but now I know it is. I've done the research, I've talked to your staff, I've talked to other people, and this is gonna bring a different, a whole different aspect to crime in Springfield. Bad guys better look out, because we're ahead of them now, this is a big deal. I'm very pleased with the license plate reader thing, it's gonna change everything in Springfield, and it works with ShotSpotter, which makes ShotSpotter more valuable. So, I'm gonna support this.
Thank you, sir, appreciate that.
Alderman Purchase?
Yes, me and Alder Mann Hanauer was together when we watched this video, and I wish that the public was able to actually hear and see what we witnessed, because the phone call that was made, it was so many far, so many blocks far away from it, and people didn't understand the impact of the gunshot that was fired to this person. And then for you all to be able to get that information and get over there and stop that person too as well, that was very important to show to the public today while we're supporting this and moving forward with it. Technology is gonna be, now that we don't have as much manpower, it still, it still cuts back on some of that time with this technology in place.
When it comes to gunfire response, there's nothing more important than getting there quickly and knowing where to go. Unfortunately, in my career, I can think of twice we've missed bodies and those gentlemen have died. Now granted, one of those areas would not have been in a ShotSpotter area, but one is in a ShotSpotter area. We just didn't have the technology at that time. ShotSpotter covers five-point-two-five square miles of our community, and it's not perfectly squares, but it affects five of the ten wards that sit here. It's deployed in parts of five of your wards. And the technology gets us there quicker. It shows us where to go, especially within seventy-five feet. I've answered a lot of questions here recently about, well, you only recover evidence twenty-three percent of the time on your ShotSpotter incidents. That's correct, that's preliminary analysis of our department, twenty-three percent of the time. We found shell casings, not evidence, shell casings, but the people want to judge that it's a success. There's many reasons why we may not find evidence. It could've been a revolver, it could've been shot from a car and the casing went in the car. I'll be honest, when we do analysis, when there's only one shot, it's very hard to find. Even though it narrows us down to an eighty-two-foot radius, that's eighty-two feet. At three o'clock in the morning, the freezing cold, or with leaves on the ground or tall grass, and you're trying to recover, or it's in a roadway where another car's already drove by and ran over, picked up the casing and moved it along. There's a human error factor there as well that we can't predict for. But, again, that's just twenty-three percent of the time we find shell casings. We do find other evidence, and we log that as a confirmed shots fired when we do that. That could be a witness testimony, that could be a broken gunshot, or windshield glass, that could be anything that tells us that something happened here. So, the other thing it does, it takes out the human error, where people call in, just like in this incident, where they call in, they think the shots came from one location, and it's totally opposite way. We all know how environmental factors and buildings and urban design affects out and how it bounces. You know, if it weren't for ShotSpotter, we'd have been ten blocks away searching in the wrong area. The wrong area several minutes after the fact. And every minute when somebody's bleeding out, is an opportunity that we don't have to save their life unless we're there on scene. So, again, we think the LPRs augment this perfectly. We see ShotSpotter is augmenting nine-one-one, we don't want to replace nine-one-one calls, we don't. ShotSpotter is just a small portion of our community, five-point-two-five square miles, but it's placed there based on historical data of weapon offenses, homicides, UUWs, AG discharges, AG batteries with a firearm. That's how they're chosen in those areas. We still need people to call. ShotSpotter can't tell us everything. We need the witness statements, we need the society, and that's why we continue to work with our community to build those better relations, to build that trust, to enhance all the technology and the relationship with the officers to make our community safer.
How soon will they be installed?
We are looking at, basically as the gentleman told us last week, probably around February for the install. The first two months would be a sixty-day pilot program, and then we would be built upon the end of that sixty days. So, our goal would hopefully, if we can get this installed, first part of February would be good for us getting into the spring season.
Alderman Gregory, and then Alderman Haner, and then Alderman Donald.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree, this at first, and I said this a little bit last week, but, you know, I was taken back by, you know, a little bit of it all, you know. You know, this video helps really show the ShotSpotter's effectiveness. The license plate reader thing, I think it is another tool, but all of these things, and that's why I was happy with you saying, talking about the community policing aspect. Because I think all of these things have to work together to really overcome some of the obstacles that we have in our community that have gotten better. I ask chief probably about every month about weapons and, you know, how many we have recovered from our streets. That's important for me, and safety is important for our community without being over-policed. I'm impressed with the box drawing. It takes our officers to the right place, and, you know, we're getting a lot of calls of complaints and things, and, you know, I get those calls and I try to forward them on so we can get to the actual area of, you know, where people are saying there's issues. So, I appreciate that. You know, I definitely want to give it a try. You know, our community, it's this people throughout this whole community that's worried about privacy issues, we talked about that. One question I did want to ask is, is this gonna, you know, do anything for speeders? I had one constituent ask me today, and I didn't think so, so I just wanted to clarify that. That it's not a tool to do speed and stuff, and I did that, but I wanted to repeat that and make sure and be clear on it. So, I appreciate you and good presentation.
Two things I'd like to point out there, as Alderman Gregory stated. Think about this. I said earlier that in twenty-three percent of the alerts that we get, find, are we gonna call for service from a corresponding call for service from a citizen? Twenty-three percent of the time. So, think about that. That's not even two and a half times out of every ten, when there's shots ringing in our community that we get a call. Imagine if you live in that area. Imagine if you're the citizens in that area who were traumatized by shots fired around the clock. Now at least we're responding, now we're knocking on doors, we're talking to people, we're trying to gather information, we're showing them we care. We're showing them that we're there for them. Instead of hearing this, like I used to hear all the time, "Man, I called the police, nobody comes." Well, if you call, we're coming. But you know what, if nobody calls, we're not coming. Now we're coming, at least in those areas where ShotSpotter is at. So, it helps build that more of a, it helps improve communications, builds a little bit of better trust, and hopefully that leads to information being provided to us to help us solve that crime. Another thing I want to point out is that this isn't just for gun violence, we're talking about LPRs, this is any crime. This could be a hit-and-run accident, this could be a burglary spree in a neighborhood. This could be any crime that comes across the area. It's also a critical infrastructure tool for terrorism, you know, to protect our power plant, to protect the areas around the capitals. You know, God's sake, we see what's happened around our country and around the world with terrorist incidents. If we have the LPRs in those areas, they're gonna help us with those investigations. So, again, it's just a vital tool for us.
Alderman Haner?
Thank you. Yeah, chief, I was not planning on supporting this until I did sit down and see the video and exactly what it does. I think that, you know, I know you guys are busy, but one of the, probably, you need to show us more often how these tools are doing good work for you so that, so that we know, you know, that we know that it's worth the money. Because, you know, like everything else, the cost just goes up every year on this, and sometimes it's almost crazy how much it goes up. And as far as the LPRs, I'm for the LPRs. My only concern is I don't, based on what you showed me, I would need more in Ward Ten. I really do. I mean, there's not, once again, you know, we don't have a lot, you know, it seems like we're getting forgotten. I think that, you know, I'm gonna have neighborhoods that are gonna say that very easily could, you know, one or two, two of those devices and it covers a whole neighborhood of three hundred houses or so. You know, what's gonna happen when they come to me and say, "Hey, I want this, we want this." I think we need to look at that and see what, how we can cover it. You know, we do have a lot of car break-ins, burglaries, not a lot, but we get them out there. And I just think that, you know, if we're gonna do this, we need to do it right, and I think we need to re-look at where we're wanting to put cameras. And if we're gonna do it, if we need to get more, we get more. But I just, I feel like, once again, from the police aspect, you know, they're looking at the outskirts and we're not getting what we probably should, so.
But we'll sit down with the vendor, obviously what we're looking at is historical data on where we think it should be based on traffic counts, traffic flow, crime, et cetera, but also covering our entry points into the city. Every entryway will be covered. We're also looking at critical infrastructure, and I haven't had a chance to sit down with Mr. Brown, but I've spoken with the mayor, we're gonna look at covering those critical infrastructure areas such as substations, the power plant. So, there'll be a few more that will probably be built, the CDOP will talk to them about, which Doug's probably shaking his head right now.
And if you don't mind, one last thing, I do want to thank your, you know, we had a situation, there's an application out that the kids are using, it's, what is it, Yik Yak or something, I don't know, whatever it is. But it's supposedly an anonymous, where kids can get on, and what they do is they just get on and trash each other. It's, I don't know why anybody would have it, but, you know, and there were some issues out last night where they bomb threats at certain schools and that. And I gotta give our police department kudos because they got the kids that did it. And, you know, to the parents out there, first of all, tell your kids to get that app off, it's terrible. And second of all, to the kids, if you think you're anonymous, you're not anonymous to our police department because they can find out who you are, and they'll come get you, and they'll pull you out of school like they did today. Thank you for that, that was a good, good deal today, so.
No, and the follow-up on that, you know, the men and women of the police department work extremely hard, our detectives did a great job on that. And depending on the incident's operations, the CID, it's administrative, we all work together on it. So, just a great job by them, but, you know, I think I want to just add to that, we've had a lot of school threats here recently. It's not a joke, it's very serious, and the Springfield Police Department will work hand-in-hand with the state's attorney to fully prosecute every individual. So, as parents, please, have these conversations with your kids. These are not jokes when we're talking about causing harm to our students, to our community. We've seen what's going on around the country, we do not want that to happen here, and we stand firmly against any of that type of joking, that type of behavior, and we are gonna prosecute it to the fullest.
Alderman Donald?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Chief, I want to say first of all that how much I appreciate the updates and the results that your department has received lately with weapons recovery. It is, it's actually scary that there are that many out there, but it's wonderful to see that you're getting them off the streets, that's the most importantly. And that goes directly to the men and women on the streets, and we appreciate those efforts. Secondly, as you know, we had discussions, you and I had discussions, the mayor and I had discussions, had discussions with many of the colleagues at this horseshoe about when ShotSpotter was first being discussed here. And it wasn't an easy vote, you know, we did some research, talked to some other elected mayors throughout the state about the technology, and I did support it ultimately, and I'm happy to hear the reports and the updates on its effectiveness because we do get asked those questions periodically, that's appreciated. But most importantly, I do appreciate your department thinking outside the box. The LPRs, license plate readers, I can't see how that can be anything but advantageous for this community. I think it's gonna make a difference. I think, I do echo Alderman Hanauer's comments about, let's make sure that, and I'm glad to hear your reply about entrances and exits to the city. Of course, Ward Nine, not to get specific about wards, but I will. Ward Nine, you know, we have Jefferson, Walnut, Brunson Lane, other major entrances in the city, I could go on, but I won't. But just keep us in mind, and I know this council will work with you on making sure we get the funds that are necessary to help you do your jobs. So, thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Alderman Redpack?
Final thing, Chief, I promise. I know that you guys place those cameras based on statistics you have on where you need them. And I understand Alderman Hanauer's concerns as we will in Ward One. But we also are reaching out with a private-public cooperation with businesses that are gonna increase the number of cameras. And I think there's several interested businesses, am I correct on that?
Yeah, we haven't approached anybody specifically yet, but one thing we liked about the vendor that was selected was the private-public partnership, whether it's a neighborhood association, whether it's a business, where they can reach out and handle those things. I know in my neighborhood, I have one entrance. So, basically, one camera would cover people coming and going from my neighborhood. Hopefully, my neighborhood association will be open-minded enough about ultimately maybe purchasing one privately, and then they can choose to share that information with the Springfield Police Department. Actually, they have to share it with us per their contract, but they don't get as much information as we get. Again, a business could do the same thing, we see it as a way to multiply the number of cameras that are out there. This isn't meant to, even though the cameras are throughout the entire community, it's not meant to cover the entire community, that's not what it is. It's based on data. And there are times where we might have to move one or get a couple extra ones when crime moves a little bit if we're not covering it, but I think we'll be pretty good with what we have laid out. But we haven't set those in stone, we'll look at those. I mean, don't get me wrong, we pretty much know what the cost is. It's twenty-four, twenty-five hundred per camera, so we know what the cost is. So, if the city wanted to round it up to an even one hundred cameras, I'll take one hundred tonight. If somebody wants to do a floor amendment to it, I'll take one hundred cameras. So, and we'll make sure that we cover some of those other areas you're talking about.
And the thing is, chief, too, is that we can move these cameras, once we get the data that we need to find out if they're effective in certain areas, that we can move these.
Absolutely, we can move them, there is a small fee for them to come out and move them, as you discussed.
Twenty-five hundred bucks?
Oh, it's two-fifty, I thought, but I could be wrong, I don't know for sure.
They charged me twenty-five hundred, no, just kidding.
Alderman Haner, and then Alderman McMenmore.
And I just got a quick follow-up. Are we, can we look at something to where if a neighborhood association buys a camera like that, or a business that, after the first year, we take over the annual payments of it or something? I mean, is that something, you know, I don't know, I think we need to get some sort of policy in place to where if somebody wants to do that, that we take it over? Because we can't, you know, in a sense, we're having them pay the initial cost.
If the city takes it over, it's gonna be under the city's requirements. We're not going to privatize it like they would have authority to.
No, no, one of the questions I got this week was about the opting-out. The opting-out is for the neighborhood association, if they live in there, they can opt out of someone or anybody in the neighborhood. You can't opt out of our cameras, so if we were gonna take it over, I'd want to make sure that we were getting all rigs that come through that area. So, prime example, my neighborhood, if they said, you know what, ten other one hundred residents wanted to opt out of it, that's fine for a neighborhood association, but if the police department takes it over, I'd want all that information, you can't opt out of the law.
No, that would be, no, that would be part of our deal.
Change, yes.
Alderman McMenmore?
Yeah, I think this license plate reader has a lot of potential, and it's broader than license plate reader. It's a vehicle reader, it's color, model, and make.
That's correct.
And then you can also get the license plate, so that we might have a hundred thousand vehicles that were captured on a particular day, and that we can ask the computer, "Give us a brown Toyota Camry," all of them that went on a certain road, and it will come up. You won't have, instantaneously, right?
That is correct, and it also reads when there is no plate, because you said, like you said, it's a vehicle read. It also captures bicyclists, it's based on motion. It could capture pedestrians if there's enough motion there.
You know, on the ShotSpotter, I'm still, I'm not convinced yet. Could you bring up slide number eight? I just want to get clarification on what, it was a map of the city of Springfield. It was roughly the eighth slide.
The one with the map?
It was the slide with, or.
It'd be slide nine, probably. Could you turn to slide nine, please?
There it is.
Yeah, that's actually. Yeah, that's actually not ShotSpotter. That's ShotSpotter connected predictive analytics. As you can see, that's in every ward. That's predictive analytics. That's what's shown in the boxes where it's telling officers to patrol at, to reduce or deter crime. Are you looking for a map of where ShotSpotter is?
When that slide came up, I thought you were saying you could reposition ShotSpotter. But we're not doing that yet. We're still covering about one-tenth of the city, of the total geographic square mile area of the city. Is that correct? So when we implement these cameras, you know, hopefully we can have the two technologies work together, but it's going to be limited because we've only got ShotSpotter in certain parts of the city.
ShotSpotter is only 5.25 miles of the city. It takes in parts of Ward 6, Ward 5, Ward 3, Ward 2, and a little bit of Ward 4. Just a minor part of Ward 4.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions or comments?
So I think for me, the selling point was to, it eliminates the, you know, my ward, I have several sections where people are intimidated. They're just outright intimidated. They hear the gunfire, they worry about retaliation. They, you know, am I going to call the police? Am I not going to call the police? And timing's everything when crime is going on. Shotfires eliminates a lot of that and gives you a more accurate description on where to respond to. So when I was in the presentation, that sold me, that let me know this is going to help because I'm always preaching at the neighborhood associations, you got to call the police and you got to call them right away. You can't think about it and wonder who did it and who it was. Or maybe that's somebody's grandson or whatever. Shotfires eliminates all that by just, you know, having you guys respond to it. So I think it's a beautiful thing that's going on. I told my story about the license plate reader last week, so I know it works. And, you know, I just suggest that we all pass this to help the city along. As far as the location, I always say things like that has to be driven by data and based on need. You know, what's the sense in having it in your ward if you haven't had gunshots in three years? I mean, so when I keep hearing the indications that are, we're going to spread it out, if the need's not there, no, we shouldn't do that. That doesn't make sense. I want it because Sean got it? No, Sean's going to get it if he needs it and I don't, I don't need it. Yeah, I just don't get why we always have to look at things from a shared situation. There's some things you ought to be glad you don't have to have and that you don't need in your neighborhood. And I think these are the kinds of things that maybe if you're not going to get one or you're determined by your data, you don't need one, that should be a good thing.
You know, in a perfect world, I know you guys embrace putting technology across the entire community. We just can't afford it. I get that. I realize the fiscal constraints the city's under and we just can't do that. But with that said, you know, the data shows where it needs to be, as you say. But as you said, that's only 5.25 square miles. I believe the city is about 78 square miles if my memory is right here. So it's less than a tenth of the city that we're covering here. That's why the importance of community members calling when they hear it. You know, sometimes they're right. Sometimes they look out the window and they see something. Those are the calls we need, you know. And certain parts of the community call more often than others. But everybody seems to take a moment to stop, analyze, did I hear what I just think I heard? I know when there were some hunters behind my house, my wife's freaking out calling me. I'm like, it probably was. We'll send somebody out there to look at it. Sure it was, it was people out there hunting in the county property adjacent to my neighborhood. Again, so trust your instincts, trust your instincts. You know what's right and wrong in your neighborhood. You know what's normal, what's not normal. And when it is normalized, that's a big problem. That's what we got to try to eliminate and address.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you very much, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry about the video now.
Chair, Chair will entertain a motion to submit with the reading of the minutes of the November 16th, 2021. City Council.
Don't move, Mayor.
Second.
Move to second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council first reading of ordinances in the record of this city council.
Don't move.
Second.
The move in second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. The chair will entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council reading of the consent agenda in the record of the city council.
Don't move.
Second.
The move in second, any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Chair will entertain a motion to place the consent agenda on final passage.
Don't move.
Second.
The move in second, any discussion?
A discussion, Mr. Mayor.
Yep, Alderman McMinimum.
I'd like to just offer a few comments regarding 2021-460. That's a, I think we've got something good going here. It's line clearance services for a two-year term for Asplund Tree Experts for $7 million for two years. What's good that's happening here is that we've had competition for the bidding. This year, we had three competitors putting in for this bid. Going back 10 years, sometimes we only had one bid come in, one competing bid. What we see here is we've moved from, if you look at who bid on this, Nelson Tree Service used to have it. The most recent two or three years, it's been Wright Tree Service. Now we're going to a third, Asplund Tree Expert. They won the bid and we had competitive bidding going on out there, which is a good thing. Now we'll have some transition problems like we had the last time. You know, the new tree service will have to get used to how they're supposed to do things in Springfield and communicate with our neighborhoods. So when they go in there, we know they're coming and the neighborhoods are prepared and so forth. But what also needs to be said here is that basically, we've got really expert tree trimmers that come in. They, you know, high-risk activity. The hydraulic lifts go way up and it's dangerous. And we want really well-trained people. We've got different kinds of situations. Sometimes it's low clearance, you know, going low in the trees. Sometimes it's going very high in the trees. But, you know, we got, from Pennsylvania, we got a bid. From Iowa, we got a bid. From Ohio, we got a bid. What I think we need to do, Mayor, and this will take some effort and some initiative by CWLP, you know, can we identify some tree trimming that our locals can do and get them trained up so that we can give some of these dollars to our local tree trimmers if they want it? Now, it'll take a lot of advanced planning because you have to get out there and make sure that they got the licenses and the training and they want to do it. And there'll be a timeline for them to kind of get geared up for it. But instead of just having one contract, because very few can bid, you know, this contract probably calls for 10 trucks exclusively devoted to this activity. So what we really need to do is have possibly a multitude of contracts, I don't know by area of the city or by type of tree trimming or whatever, and try to get some of this money to our locals. And they might underbid the nationals that come in here and do this tree service. So, I mean, I've been talking about this for 10 years and I haven't talked about it for a few years now because we are making improvements, we're getting some competition. And we could use some more competition with our local tree services if they want to get involved in it. And so, you know, it will take a lot of initiative by someone at CWLP in the Electric Division that really wants to spend some time on this. And, you know, start working on this a year before the contract goes out again. But the good news is we got competition and it would be nice to get some local competition. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Any other comments on the consent agenda? Alderman Repath.
Just to follow up, Alderman, I understand that and we all want local businesses. This is a high technical skill that requires a pretty extensive license. That's why it goes out nationwide. We've always advocated that we wanted to bring this in-house. And the mayor even said we wanted to try to do that. It's a tough process. It really is. We'd have to put some people through some serious training. And I wouldn't be opposed to that, but it is a pretty tough license to get.
Yeah, I'm not saying give it out entirely to locals. I'm just saying maybe we can carve out pieces of it that could go to locals.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the consent agenda vote yes. Those opposed vote no. The voting is now open. And the consent agenda.
I'm not getting a response, but I'm a yes vote.
Passes eight, voting yes, none voting no.
Doesn't look like you're logged in.
Agenda number 2021-336, 2021-337, 2021-365, 2021-370, and 2021-371 remain tabled during committee. Any movement on any of those? Chair will entertain a motion to take out of order for appointments, item number 2021-471, 2021-472, 2021-479, and 2021-480 and 2021-481.
So moved.
Is ominous, no vote, please?
Second.
Can we do it ominous?
Second.
Yes.
What's that?
Can we do it ominous?
Sure.
Okay.
All right.
Is there a motion for ominous vote?
Don't move.
Second.
Second.
The move in second, any discussion ominous vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is 2021-471, an ordinance approving the appointment of Michael P. Murphy to the Springfield Convention and Visitors Advisory Board. Agenda number 2021-472, an ordinance approving the appointment of William Bishop IV to the Springfield Economic and Community Development Commission. Agenda number 2021-479, an ordinance appointing Lisa Branham to the Springfield Economic Community Development Commission. Agenda number 2021-480, an ordinance appointing Catherine R. Heffernan to the Springfield Planning and Zoning Commission. And agenda number 2021-481, an ordinance appointing Kimberly Elliott to the Springfield Planning and Zoning Commission. Chair will entertain a motion to place or to approve said ordinances.
Don't move.
Second.
The move in second, any discussion?
Yes.
Alderman Repath.
We got a couple shady guys on here. Mike Murphy and Billy Bishop. No, these are quality guys. Congratulations on this.
Yep. Yeah, we would like, well, let's vote and then we'll have them each come up and introduce themselves, those that are here. Any other discussion? All in favors, say aye. We can do it ominous? Oh, you'll have to vote. Okay, cast your vote, please.
It's not up.
Oppose, oppose, vote no, and the voting is now open. And the appointments pass eight, voting yes, none voting no. And like to welcome Mike Murphy, former representative. We're really excited that you have taken on the chamber position. I think you'll do great work, especially with your background in small business and especially in this time of societal need. So thank you very much.
Well, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Council. I appreciate it and I appreciate the kind words you said, Mayor, when I got my appointment. I am looking forward to serving on the Convention and Visitors Bureau Advisory Board. As you well know, I spent many of my professional years running Charlie Parker's that took advantage of visitors in Springfield, so I'm looking forward to giving back. So thanks and I appreciate the unanimous vote. There, Chuck, I wasn't sure about that.
Well.
Well, thank you very much.
Hey, I just want to say thank you for your consideration. I look forward to this position and look forward to, you know, serving the community in the city of Springfield to the best of my ability.
Thank you, William.
And congratulations, Bill. You're doing a good job out there. I'm watching you.
Catherine's in the audience. She was here last week. I don't know if you want to say anything else, but we appreciate you coming. But if you'd like to, you can.
I mean, basically what he said, but. Yeah, I'm just very excited to learn a lot, to be able to serve our community because I think that's one of the best things you could do with your life. And again, I thank everybody here for all that you're doing for our city and ultimately our country. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is 2021-466, a resolution notifying the State of Illinois Department of Transportation that motor fuel tax rebuild funds, the amount of $3,944,561.37, may be used for the construction of the downtown traffic signal modernization and one-way street conversion project MFT, section number 19-00489-00-TL, for the Office of Public Works. Chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number 2021-466 on final passage.
So move.
Second.
Present.
Move in second, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion vote yes. Those opposed vote no. The voting is now open. And the ordinance passes sudden voting yes, none voting no, and one voting present. Next item on the agenda is 2021-467, an ordinance accepting the lowest bid and authorizing execution of contract number PW22-09-58 with Capital Construction Group LLC doing business as the GC Electric for construction services for the downtown traffic signal modernization and one-way streets conversion project MFT, section 19-00489-00-TL, and an amount not to exceed $3,944,561.37 for the Office of Public Works. Chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number 2021-467 on final passage.
So move.
Second.
The move in second, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion vote yes. Those opposed vote no. The voting is now open. The ordinance passes eight, voting yes, none voting no. Next item on the agenda is 2021-468, an ordinance authorizing supplemental appropriation in the amount of $1 million for the Office of Public Works. Chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number 2021-468 on final passage.
So move. Second.
The move in second, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion vote yes. Those opposed vote no. The voting is now open.
And Mr. Mayor, if I may, this is, this is a big one here. I actually just took a couple calls about some questions on this. So I'm happy to see this moving forward and I think that's going to be a great improvement for that backside. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And the ordinance does pass eight, voting yes, none voting no. Final item on the agenda is 2021-474, ordinance authorizing redevelopment agreement with the Springfield Project for redevelopment assistance for the historic site located at 902 South 12th Street, utilizing Far East Side TIF increment finance funds in the amount not to exceed $217,720 through the Office of Planning and Economic Development. Chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number 2021-474 on final passage.
So move.
Second.
The move in second, Chair will entertain a motion to amend the ordinance.
So move.
Second.
The move in second, and I'd ask Corporation Council to go over the amendment, if you would, please.
Yes, sir, Mayor. Essentially, what the amendment does, it does give the option, it designates the use of basically unappropriated fund balance for the corporate fund in order to pay the initial phase of $217,720 with the proviso that the corporate fund would be reimbursed from either tax increment finance funds or community development block grant funds as part of the final or total project cost when the entire project comes forward. So this is providing, Mayor, basically interim funding with reimbursement subsequent, either from TIF or from CDBG.
Any discussion on the amendment? Alderman Repath?
No, not on the amendment, sir.
Alderman Hanauer.
Okay, so, well, so basically what you're saying is, is we're going to pay the full amount, either through TIF or through CDBG. Mayor, I'm sorry, and I think this is a very valuable project, but we have rules. And I don't know, you know, if any other organization had the same situation, I don't know that we would bend rules or change rules for them. I, you know, what we've done in the past is 50%, the maximum is 50% of the project. And I wasn't really comfortable with that when we did Legacy Point. And 30%, 33% for TIF. And what this is saying, I mean, we just got it, so I don't know, you know, hadn't been able to really study it, but this seems like we're breaking other rules. And if we use TIF, if we use TIF, it's, I'm not, I won't get into that. I'll let someone else.
Mayor, I think the developer can explain. There's been some changes. Can we hear from them to?
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
You'd state your name and address for the council, we'd appreciate it.
Yes, Dominic Watson.
My address is 3217 Mark Wood Lane, Springfield, Illinois 62712. Standing before you here again to bring forth the information that was requested last week by, by council members. And so Artie Lawrence, Artie Lawrence, John Guest with Artie Lawrence, who couldn't be here today, he's in the emergency room with COVID. So keep him in your prayers. But we were able, he was able to provide a supplementary budget that included the complete, the complete, the complete redevelopment project funding amount. It is totaled at just south of $1.5 million.
Dominic, I did not receive that, and I looked at my mail. I'm sorry?
Do we have a handout?
I don't have a total, I'm sorry, I don't have one for each of you, but I can spread around. I do have a couple copies.
And I think my question, Dominic, is this, how's it break down into 1.5 million? And I thought that the initial request was to put money in to just stabilize the building until we could figure this out. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. At the, at the request of, of, I think it was Alderman Hanauer, I believe you brought it up as well, that you wanted to ensure that the 217 was under 33% of the total cost. And so what we had is Artie Lawrence pulled these numbers. That way, and, and again, history of the project, he actually came up with these numbers about three years ago when he provided the initial bid. And so he just updated the numbers based on a couple of the updates that we wanted done to the property present day. And so that's how he drew that number. And the total footprint of the redevelopment project is nearly 5,000 square feet. Total footprint of the redevelopment project. And that answers your question from last week as well. It wasn't just 1,000 square feet. We're looking at 5,000 square feet.
Alderman Donlin, then Alderman Gregory?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Watson, for being here this evening, for providing this additional information. I guess my question really comes down to, I want to make sure I understand the mechanics. Mayor, you know, I've been kind of a stickler for TIF funds over the, over the years and ask a lot of questions about the balances and where the money's going and so forth. And, and, you know, the, the fact that we were able to extend the downtown TIF and have these others is wonderful for the community. We can invest monies in targeted areas, but I, my understanding is that we got a couple of things at play here, and I just want to make sure I understand the mechanics. One is, when you use tax increment financing funds, we're really reimbursing a developer or development for certain eligible costs. And what happens is the, you know, like, in this example, the work would be done, the $217,720 would be paid, then there would be proof that that's been paid, that, that proof would then go to the Office of Planning and Economic Development, and then there would be a reimbursement if, you know, the redevelopment agreement is in place and all the rules were followed and so forth. Do you have the financing to do the $217,720 worth of expenditures?
Do we have the financing upfront to do that? No, we do not.
Okay, and then secondly, we have a rule in place, and, and I was the sponsor of this ordinance, that it was because of some issues that it came up before with some projects, that we can't reimburse a project, and remember, we're talking about reimbursing. We can't reimburse until the occupancy permit or the, and/or the project is complete. So I guess my question is of Corporation Council, help me understand, knowing the fact that we don't have financing, how the city can reimburse for the cost when the financing's not in place? And then secondly, what, since the ordinance is in place, that you can't reimburse a TIF project until the work's complete and the certificate of occupancy is, is done, how do we do, how would we do this? What's being proposed?
Well, I think that a couple of things, that if the commitment, you remember, you may recall, I think this was talked about a little bit in the committee, this is an unusual circumstance, because it's kind of happening piecemeal, meaning that the initial phase, because of the condition of the building, just to stabilize it with the, basically follow-on proposal for the entire project. And I think that was talked about a little bit at the committee meeting. And in this case, if the city makes a commitment, if there is a commitment for that funding, then typically what would happen, and this has happened in other projects, they will be able to monetize that with a bank to get interim financing pending to, in order to get the work done, if it, if that becomes a necessity. In other words, we do allow the development agreements, for example, to be assigned or pledged in order to provide for that interim financing. That's been done on several projects. One example would be like the YMCA, where the city made pledges, of which then the YMCA ended up being able to borrow construction funds with the promise of later reimbursement, as an example. So I don't know the exact arrangements, I'm, I'm not clear on what the exact arrangements would be in this circumstance. I don't know how far that's gone with the, with a bank or doing any kind of interim construction financing, I'm not sure if it's gone that far yet. However, I think the mechanics would be able to comply with the ordinance requirements based on what we've done with others. Now, that being said, if the, as was discussed earlier, if the council's decision is to do some kind of interim financing with, as an alternative, corporate funds with a reimbursement of the corporate funds, that's been done a couple of different times, you may remember with the sewer project in relation to On Jackson, where there were funds done with the corporate fund to be reimbursed by the TIF over time. And that same example, you may recall, the council had approved on, in respect to the YMCA, where there was a, almost similar to an interfund loan, where corporate funds were used, but to be reimbursed by the TIF funds as they came, as they come in, in relation, for example, for the Y project. There was authorization to do that. So in my mind, I think the thing that's out of, slightly out of the norm here is because of the phasing where the initial work, and I think it's being requested just because of the bad condition of the building, I think. In other words, I, it's my understanding that that's what's causing it being presented out of order, meaning like an initial stabilization phase with a follow-on for the complete project. So at least that is my understanding.
If I, if I can to follow up with that, Mr. Watson, I, you and I, I appreciate you calling me, and we had a great conversation about, you know, I'm, I'm a student of history, and I respect the, the history involved with this project. My concern is merely investing, you know, six digits of city taxpayers' money and not having, in other words, it has happened before where we've invested a significant amount of money on a project, and then we don't get a complete project. And, and so having a plan and, and place, and, and I know you get
Financing.
Yeah, and is, is extremely important, and that's, that's why we're, that's why I'm asking these questions. Because we've been, we've been burned by projects downtown before specifically. And, and I'd like to see this project go forward. I'm, I'm thinking about it hard. I, I think the intent is from the heart, you and, you and your group, and, and what's trying to be accomplished here. I just have some concerns about a major outlay of, of funds without the other pieces being in place. And, and I, and I know that we're, the weather's, the weather's the bad thing out here that's impacting the property, and, and just, I want you to know that I'm giving it some hard thoughts.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Yeah, Alderman Gregory, then Hanauer, then Pulgenzi.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I, you know, I just wanted to take my time to speak, and, and certainly, you know, you guys know I can get quite passionate about projects for the east side, and, and, you know. So, so with that, I made a few notes. So, you know, and I, and I just focused on the objections and really wanted to answer those. So we, we just answered the first objection that we got about the total cost price. I, I, I do, we talked about the YMCA and what we've done. In fact, that was the first time that we ever used downtown TIF to go over Enos Park. It was a 10-0 vote. They're a non-for-profit, don't put anything into the increment directly themselves. However, it has done wonders for the community. That's what we're trying to do. And I, it was six and a half million, the largest one that we've ever done. This is 1.5, even if we just put 1.5 in our community, it's worth it. 37, 37.4 is the policy that you're referring to, that you, that you did back in 2017. But this policy says unless otherwise approved by the city council, whenever more than $750,000 of tax increment financing funds used to reimburse, are used to reimburse the project, that, that the reimbursement may take place only after. So this is well below that, and I think it, it fits in our code. I think, I think it's, it's in compliance with, with the ordinance that you do, did do. Now, I will say, along with every law that, that, that is made, there is some unintended consequences. And I'm telling you guys, not only this, but the 50% thing is hurting our community. The, the original purpose for TIFs was for blighted communities like mine. And we have went and made changes, and it is hurting our community. I got people up here that need roofs. We can pay $5,000 of it, but it costs $8,000. They don't have $3,000. So regardless of if we pass this or not, we need to be thinking about a major TIF reform and how we do it, whether that's making some special ordinances for this end of town to use, it's, it's their money, it's the people of this community's money generated, and they should have the ability, in my opinion, to use it to further the community in return, which is going to put money back into this increment. You know, so, so, so that's just where I'm at. This is important for our community, but this is only the first step. I get it. But this is, you know, as I said last week, this is some of the innovative ways that we really have to do it. And, and, you know, I, I would really like everyone's support to, to get something done for our community, naturally. We, we have $3.5 million in that TIF, hasn't been used in God knows when. We've, we've spent more on, 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 on administrative fees than, 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 you know, the actual people. And they're all over me about it. We got to do better. So I appreciate you guys.
Alderman Hanauer, then Alderman Pulgenzi?
Well, the, here's the thing. And, and I appreciate what you said, Sean, you're, you know, but, but we've set rules, and we've tried to abide by them, and we've set them because we've gotten burned before on, on some projects. The other part, if, and, and I'm a little disappointed in the EDC, because when did they ever allow a project to go through that didn't have financing? When did they ever have, have a project that goes through? Their job is to look at this stuff. If this is just going to be a rubber stamp, we might as well vote to abolish that, that commission, because they're not doing their job. You know, there's, there's bankers on there. A banker wouldn't, would, would, would a bank approve this?
He voted no.
Well, I, I, I think that tells you, you know. Look, I, I, I appreciate what we're, what we're trying to do here. But, you know, we, we, we approve this, they go lift that house up, it, it, it tumbles down, and we wasted $211,000, and the owners have nothing in it.
Ralph, we don't approve it, and it falls down. People are going to be looking at us, too.
The owners have nothing in it on the project.
If, if I can speak to this.
Go ahead.
I, I would like to, to challenge that, that notion. We, we have put significant amount of money in through partnerships with the community. And so I just wanted to rebuttal that. And so we are a proven community organization, a community development corporation.
I'm talking about with the, with the project itself, is what I'm talking about. And we, there's not one, one TIF that's come through here where we didn't see the financing and, and all that. That, that's just my point. And, you know, so
Yeah, if I could, I'll explain it, because Dominic gave the presentation, and it's a work in progress. Dominic took over this project maybe
Months ago.
How many?
Two months ago.
Two months ago. So it's been with the Springfield project for a number of years. And unfortunately, you know, we all talk about plans and implementing plans. We had a plan of TSP Hope Neighborhood Revitalization, great plan, no funds, no financing behind it. So the reason this didn't come forward is because the TIF had not been extended over there. So why the city council didn't do the east side TIF all the way to 11th to 18th, natural boundaries, I'm not sure, but we took the action to correct that. So it does encompass the Taylor House, the Lincoln colored home. And we've all talked about it in these walls and beyond these walls with regards to the importance of, you know, celebrating our history. But the one that we've done the study on, that we haven't been able to pinpoint the funds for, is the, whether we like it or not, is the African-American history. And so with this project, and, you know, everybody's gone over there or saw pictures, it's a dilapidated state. And so what we'd like to do is stabilize it. We've identified the funding source, and if it does fall in, then what we do is, we're not out the 200,000, we're out something to pay the contractor, you rebuild it. And that's what we would do at that point in time. The reason, and we've looked at replica replacement, I think Alderman McMinimum mentioned that, and others. The reason you want to go this route, and I'll let Dominic explain the, what they put in place so far, and it's a work in progress, because he's just been at it two months, and he's done great work trying to move the initiative ahead, is what you're trying to do is identify funding sources. So TIF's one of them, small piece right now, it's roughly what, fifth of the project cost, or whatever it ends up being. And then you have state funding, which Senator Turner expressed interest in this, and getting a state designation for this. And then the other piece is historic tax credits. And so in order to achieve the historic tax credits with the bank, leveraging all those resources, is with regards to the structure and refurbishing it. But if you take it down, then there goes the historic tax credits. The other piece, of course, is community development block grant funds, but with those funds, there's other requirements that come with it. That's why we're not coming forward with community development block grant funds. TIF funds allow us the greatest flexibility to address the issue now before winter fully sets in and try to stabilize it, and that's why we came forward. But if you talk about the plan as you see it moving forward, that'd be helpful for the council.
I hate to quote Game of Thrones, but winter is coming, right? Winter is coming. All right, so we've been looking at various partnerships, and I spoke to this last week, but we've been looking at various partnerships, including Root History, who's very, very motivating, very interesting, coming to the table to take over the property long-term, to redevelop. And we're looking at STEM and the arts, so STEAM. We're looking at restoring some of the, some of the trade programs that existed back in 1901, hosting that out of those services through partnerships with South Town Construction. We're looking at how this could be the epicenter of activity for South Town, for the South Town community in conjunction with some of the other projects that are taking place. And so we're very confident, very confident that we'll be able to reach those low to moderate income individuals who live in that general vicinity. So we're exploring all options that are on the table. We're looking at funding sources that extend not just state and, and federal dollars, but also private dollars. So we're looking at, and we've already been fortunate enough, and I, I wanted to speak to this, this earlier, but we've been fortunate enough to have commitments from the Community Foundation for the Land of Lincoln, who dumped a significant amount of money into this over the past, I want to say, six, six years or so, six years or so. So if the Community Foundation is committed to it, we're going to leverage other Community Foundation resources. We're also looking at the African-American Cultural Heritage Action Fund. We're looking at telling of, telling the full story Presidential Fund. We're looking at national, other national trust funds. So again, we're not just sitting and begging the city for dollars without putting any type of significant work in trying to secure other dollars. We are coming to the table as good stewards and good partners to try to get the job done. That's, that's all. We've had the property since 2014. We were hoping that this would be a part of a larger redevelopment project titled the Neighborhood Hope, that, that the mayor spoke of. We weren't able to, to get that done, predates me. Two months, two months, I took over the, this organization. And we've already come to the table with two comprehensive redevelopment projects in the Taylor Home, as well as Cap 1908. So again, I wanted to, I know that we're talking TIF dollars, we're talking about other funding, but I wanted to come with the facts. The facts are, we are leveraging other dollars, other dollars for a $1.5 million project that does not yet have the, yet, yet have the commitment of a financial institution, yet. But we are going to leverage this opportunity and turn it into a gem, a gem for our community.
Alderman Pulgenzi, then Alderman Purchase, and Alderman Rep. Pat?
I, does this exist in Ward 2 or Ward 3?
Ward 2.
And are we allowed to use cannabis money to fund this?
I was just going to ask that.
Yes, we'd be able to do that per council approval.
Why don't we use cannabis money? It's sitting there. Just use cannabis money to fund this and then go through the normal process of applying for TIF dollars after it's used? I mean, it's sitting there, and nobody's ever
I mean, it's sitting there and nobody's ever touched it.
Yeah, I'd ask, I love Director McCarthy's here. He could give a report on the balance. We do have some allocated. We've already done the housing initiative. But with the business side, there's four hundred thousand that's been allocated towards business loans or grants for this year.
Yeah, so we're, since inception in July of twenty twenty, I think it was, through our collection and last collection that we have, a report on is August. We've collected eight hundred and some odd thousand dollars, give or take. We've spent only two fifty of it, and that was on the pension, extra pension contributions, if you might remember. So currently, we have over six hundred thousand available.
But that's split, isn't it?
But it's split. So the of the eight something, you've got over four hundred thousand available right now for the portion for East Side development.
So we're only talking about half of that.
Correct.
That, based on that number on the screen, yes, roughly that would be about half of what's available.
So let me understand.
So if I, I'm gonna, Director McCarthy, so we had eight hundred thousand, minus the two hundred fifty thousand leaves.
But it's half, it's half of the eight hundred thousands for pensions.
What was that?
It's it's half. So of the eight hundred and some thousand, and I'm not giving you an exact number because I don't remember it, number one. But, yes, so half of that would be over four hundred thousand for, it's fifty fifty. So it's over four hundred thousand for pension contributions and a little over four hundred thousand for the East Side development. And none of the East Side development money has been touched yet, so you have over four hundred thousand available for that purpose.
And we're only asking for about half of that.
Right. That's what it sounds like.
It seems to me that would be the perfect funding source for the initial part of this.
That way, we're not breaking the rules.
Keep in mind, regardless of what we pick, corporate fund or cannabis, it's reimbursable through TIF. That's the extent, or CDBG.
But remember, Mayor, that if we if we tap the TIF, it's still got to be meet the criteria. So the cannabis money does not have to meet that criteria. We'll spend it as as the council deems, correct?
Correct.
That's correct.
So it's a cleaner, it's a cleaner way for us to at least get the 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 foundation stabilized for the winter. And and you know, the most important thing is we're missing the mechanics here. The mechanics of this whole thing is comes down to, we gotta have a revenue source. We gotta figure out how we're going to finance this beyond this. The historical preservation grants are out there. Alderman Turner's working with the state to get a designation. There's also federal money. So we got a lot of avenues that we can tap here. But instead of taking our whole corporate fund or the whole TIF money and that kind of thing, but we got, we need a little time. We, I I'd ask if we hold this and we can talk through this. I I told you I would help you on this. I will. And if you agree with that, Sean, I think it it'd be best for us to just hold on to it and and work through this because I think that the consensus, from what I hear, is that we do have a source that we can tap for the initial part of this.
But with the cannabis.
We really can't hold on to it because winter's coming.
Right, yeah.
We've got the cannabis money, let's use it, let's stabilize it, let's get the project done.
Alderman Gregory, then Alderman Purchase.
My my quick question and first thought with cannabis money is, is that we have, we we have allocated four hundred and forty-five thousand into two programs. Into 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 two programs, correct? Into the business assistance and into our housing program.
I don't know the exact breakdown of what OPEC has done or how they're going to allocate that. I can just tell you the dollars that are available.
Yeah, we passed ordinance to put four hundred and forty-five thousand dollars into those two programs, a hundred thousand dollars in the homeowner, owner occupied development and three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in those programs.
You're talking about the budget when it was passed.
Okay, yes.
Because that's your, the number you're referring to is the budget.
So is it committed?
What's that?
That money's committed already?
Correct. As far as I know, no projects have been approved by
No.
this council to do any, anything with that money. None of it's been spent.
Wait, 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 Alderman.
I'll have a corporation counsel interpret the cannabis ordinance.
Well, I need to, I would need to just take a look at that. There there was an, two things. There's a city code provision that provides for the fifty fifty, if you recall. There was a subsequent ordinance, is my rem, is my memory, that allocated, I believe, then Alderwoman Turner presented an ordinance that was adopted by the city council that allocated specific funds for a program. And that's separate and distinct from the budget or the city code. There was a a program that was passed in my, I don't off the top of my head remember the exact amounts, but it was something in the range of three or four hundred thousand, part residential, part for business. So it set out the parameters, who was eligible, what the territory was, how much people could get, if you recall. And I think that's what the mayor's referring to, is that that has been allocated to those two programs.
Okay.
So.
Does that bill, does that ring a bell?
I I don't recall that, I vaguely, but I can, I can just tell you the dollars available and then the council can do.
So I, my, from from the way I look at it, and and I I know for sure, we put four hundred and forty-five thousand dollars into two programs, into those two programs from this, from this money. And then I I just recently, I know you couldn't give the exact number, but I I I remember vaguely on the news of them talking about that, and we said we had about six seventeen in that fund. So to me, I I thought we were about two hundred thousand dollars over the four forty-five, which is still not enough to pay pay for this entirely. So for multiple reasons, you know, I I I really think this shouldn't be that's this this hard to do something for the East Side. But for multiple reasons, I do, I do want to hold this for a couple of weeks and 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 then take a vote and and just see where we're at.
Alderman Purchase, Alderman Hanauer, then Alderman Williams.
I'm just gonna say I support Sean, but with me dealing with real estate, I know time is precious and of essence. And the more we sit on this, the house may fall or cave in already. And I know that you may not, well, first off too, Dominic, how long will it take to structure this? Director McCarthy, don't go nowhere.
So we were told that it would, the work would take place through the winter, through the winter. So they did say.
Thirty days, sixty days?
It would probably take up to ninety days.
Ninety days to get it stable?
Just to get it stable?
There's lifting that has to be done, there's digging of the foundation, so.
I understand that. And even with the weather that we're getting ready to hit into, they would still be able to do this?
Yeah, they're confident. They're complete professionals who have done project, projects in the winter before. So they said that there wasn't an issue with laying concrete during rigid temperatures. They have mechanisms to handle all of that.
Okay. And then my second thing is for Sean, that I know that you don't want to really touch your cannabis money over there, but when we look around this horseshoe, you know how your vote is gonna go.
I don't have it. I I, we don't have it in the cannabis fund to take out. I don't have two hundred seventeen thousand extra dollars in the cannabis fund yet.
But if you, if Director McCarthy just said that no projects have been approved and you do have the funds available, you get to choose between you and Roy, how y'all want to spend that and get the support from the rest of the council. I'm trying to help.
No, I I understand what you're saying, Alderman Purchase, but I'm just saying, we passed a ordinance and we put four hundred and forty-five thousand into two, these two programs. And I do not, we do not have, we we probably about two hundred thousand dollars over that threshold from my calculation. So we don't have that in that fund. But, you know.
I'm waiting.
Well, I didn't want to jump in. Remember, I said that that was the collections through August. You still have four months or so even in this, in this year right now of collections coming in. So that'll probably be a hundred and fifty, a hundred and sixty thousand more in that particular area, if that helps. And you know, to Mr. Zirkle's point earlier, you can always change later. If you want to proceed with cannabis funds, assuming the ordinances that have been passed, you you can do it. And then you come back and realize that you can use TIF money for it. It's TIF eligible, it follows the rules that the mayor's talking about and everything. You can always pay it back.
Yeah, I'm just saying.
And I think the mayor kind of mentioned.
I'm gonna make one thing perfectly clear. This is TIF eligible. And so let's talk about TIF. I'm gonna throw it all out there. Because where we got hung up on with Treasurer Joe Adeel was not this type of project. The hundred, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars the city spent on the roof. So even though we reimbursed it, and that's the argument the Park District had, so we worked through that. And so when we talk about silos, that's a silo. Over there, that's a silo across the street. So we worked through it, we reimbursed, because at that time, we had the deficiency with the corporate fund. So in one fund, just like your family, when one person's sick, you help it, right? And so at that time, the corporate fund was sick. So the Alderman made the amendment, even though I put it in the budget. And so we made the transfer, we reimbursed it. But what do the other governing bodies like the Capitol Township do? They hang their hat on that type of action. Even though we took care of it, everything was by the book. Just like tonight, everything's by the book. So let's not muddy up the water saying it's not. So if we want to stick with the third, even though we don't want to project that this two hundred thousand is a third of one point five million, which it's not, it's a lot lower. So if you want to take a third of the amount, and if you want to use cannabis or corporate fund, I'm fine with either one, you use seventy-two thousand dollars from TIF because it is eligible, and then you sell it. If it's cannabis or corporate fund, the bottom line is, for each city council member, we all have to decide, is this something we want to do or not? I mean, it's a philosophical, it's a policy decision. Each and every person around this horseshoe has to do. So unlike Alderman Gregory would like to do, if if you want to hold it till next city council, I say no. Let's have a special city council meeting before the next committee is hold next Tuesday. So we can take, sell it once and for all, have the vote. And if everybody wants to do that, we can do that and run the numbers and see where we're at on everything. But I just want to make everybody perfectly clear, this is within the guidelines of TIF and it's within the guidelines that we're setting forward.
So Mayor. Hold on, hold on, I'm next.
Okay, Alderman Hanauer.
I think.
No, it was Alderman Williams, you're right.
Yes.
Alderman Hanauer, Repath, Purchase and Pulgenzi.
Well, Mayor, you you pretty much said what I was gonna say, talk about anyway. But I I do want to remind everybody that cannabis money is not just Ward two. Cannabis money is Ward three. Taylor House is in Ward two. Now, I'm a supporter of this this project, but I got other things to worry about now if we're gonna include cannabis money because we've had an application out there, we've got citizens who have applied from Ward three. Their application is in, some of them have been approved, you know, through the program as far as starting to get some work done. So I don't want to create a mess, you know, with messing this money up that we already then got the application processes out for the program that Senator Turner or my predecessor put in place before, I think it was one of her last acts, you know. And so people were out there doing their exterior of their homes through these programs and these apps, it's been online. And here we come today, it's gonna say we're gonna use that as a source. I just think, again, maybe, maybe not because I have to answer to the citizens of Ward three and their portion of the cannabis money, because that was the other side of it, you know. So I just want to remind you guys of that.
Alderman Hanauer, then Repath, Purchase and Pulgenzi.
Well, and and I'm sorry, but this isn't about making it difficult for something in Ward two, Sean. This is about, we have rules on how we do things. We have, we've, I have not seen a TIF project come through here that didn't have financing, didn't have have things in order. I have not seen it. Now, so are we gonna link to now, tell anybody, you you can just come and throw projects out there if it's TIF eligible? And I I agree with you, Mayor, this is one hundred percent completely TIF eligible. But our rules are third of the project. They don't have, I I have not seen any of the financial stuff. You said, you were a banker. This would not have passed your bank. You know it wouldn't. And you know, you just know it wouldn't. And this has not, I'm just saying, you know, I like to, I like using the cannabis money because we we can do that. If we have to loan it from the, you know, borrow from the general and have the cannabis pay it back as it goes, so be it. But we have rules and we have procedures for TIF money. We need to follow them. And if we're not gonna follow them, you you tell us what we're gonna do. Are we gonna allow one hundred percent on everything? Because I don't think that that's right either. I'm pretty, I think a lot of people here are pretty happy with the thirty-three and a third.
I think what this is, is a community project. And again, it's a matter of definition. I compare it to the rail project. You know how much bank money went into the rail project? A three hundred million dollar rail project? Zero. It's all funded through federal, state, local. And that's what we're trying to do. It it, again, it's everybody's preference if you want to support it or not. It's a historic site, you know, and that, we can debate the condition, the finances, and that's what Dominic's trying to piece together here. That's what we're here to help with, and that's why we presented it. But in defense of the Economic Community Development Commission, I asked that this come forward just because of the time we're in. You know, we're heading into the winter. We didn't want to see it go another winter because who knows if it makes it out. And then, you know, shame on us if we wouldn't have made the effort to try to save it. And so the request came and we're trying to move in that direction.
So, so with that.
So it goes to Alderman Repath, then Purchase, Pulgenzi and then Gregory.
Well, I fall back on to the TIF requirements and that, I I don't have a problem spending the marijuana money on it. But the TIF requirements, we don't have the guidelines. We got, we usually have a plan, a revenue source and know where where the rest of the project's gonna be funded. We don't know that. And and that's, that's an important part of this whole thing. So I do support using the marijuana money.
Can't we just use the marijuana money to stabilize the project and then go over to the TIF? If that's what we need to do, just to pass it and get it started? I, you know, I'm still learning, so I'm sitting here asking everyone questions.
How about part is using it to stabilize and be reimbursed through the TIF?
Yes.
Or CDBG?
So you're getting it started and then you're moving back over to the TIF, just to get the, to get the project going.
That's how the amendment's worded. You'd supplant the corporate fund with the cannabis fund. And then it'd be, as it qualifies, if, you know, we're third, so once the work's done, you're using cannabis. When that work's done, a third of that comes from the TIF. So seventy thousand, seventy-two thousand would come from the TIF after they stabilize it. Then, as the project would move further along and it reached the next point, then you'd reimburse for the next third or the rest of it. Depending on how the project moved along.
Somebody make the motion.
I wasn't done, Chuck.
Alderman, yeah, you told him.
It, when, so when that part, that process starts then, is that when Dominic comes back and show us what our colleagues are asking about? Like the funds, what do you have, the the partners?
The next phase, right.
So that's when you'll have Gina and Route sixty-six to be able to talk about the funding. Because I think what's missing up here is hearing the funding that you have coming forward. Like, I know you say yet, but if you could bring us some of that, that could help, but let us just try to get past this part and start it. And you worked really hard and diligently to bring people forward to show us commitments on paper.
Absolutely. And and we we are working, I I know you guys only see, you know, what what we're presenting here, but we're working around the clock to, again, secure what's needed to to be secured, to move forward, so.
Alderman Pulgenzi, Gregory and then Repath.
I definitely want to see this project go forward and using the cannabis money entirely for the two hundred and seventeen, seven twenty would be clean. And then after that, we could go and apply for the TIF. Once it's stabilized and it comes forth with a a whole set of funding and more numbers and everything that they need to do, we can go with the TIF. That way, it's clean, it goes by the rules, and we're not breaking any rules.
Mayor, does that interrupt the projects that Roy just said is going on? So applications that came in and people are being approved, does that interrupt any of that process currently?
I'd have to.
So I, so what I'm, what I'm thinking then, so then out of that four, Sean just used all his in one walk, boom. Because he, over here is the other half that belongs to Ward three in the split.
What?
That's, that's the way I see that.
I didn't think there was any boundaries.
Taylor House is in Ward two. Now, now, we, when we did this cannabis, it's a split. It's not just like all the East Side and everything in Ward two. It's a split.
That's why I'm asking.
And I'm be sitting here saying Ward three will get its share. So how I keep those projects you talking about in them apps, okay, I still got that other half. I mean, that's. I mean, that two that you talking about, Mr. Fergensy, is fine because that'd be all his share though. What's left will have to be for War II.
He's just borrowing it. Don't you want to see?
Hey, Mayor, we can re-roll the map.
I want to see it go forward. Okay, Alderman, it goes to Alderman Gregory, then Rep. Path.
I, I, you know, I think we're right there. This amendment is, is, is to, to take it out of the corporate fund and, and repay that with either TIF fund once we get to this finished product or the community development block funding. So we are going to pay this back into the, to the corporate fund. We're not going to lose nothing out of that, you know? And for, for me, I'm, I'm good with it. I mean, do we want to shift it? I, I, I don't feel comfortable doing the cannabis thing because I think it's going to mess up the other business things. Now, if we, Alderman Rep. Path just gave me a great idea, and, and Mr. Budget Director McCarty gave a great idea as, as we get more funds and we go over that threshold, we can pay the corporate fund back with that. I would be okay with that. I'm fine with that. And, but that's probably not, you know, I'm, I'm fine with that as it, as it goes over and, and expensing $200,000 on that. And then, what do you think?
Alderman Rep. Path.
I know how to get these.
So, you got to remember now, in the next three or four months, we're going to generate more, more funding into that cannabis fund. And the way they're buying it's going to be crazy anyway, so. But, you know, I think it's time for a motion, and I think that, I think that the idea that we had about using the entire amount out of, out of the marijuana money should be the fund we take it out of. And then we, it gives us time to come back and figure out, Dominic, to bring revenue sources and whatever grants we can get from the historical preservation and those kind of things. So I would make a motion that we substitute the, the fund balance to say corporate, I mean marijuana money.
On the amendment?
Yes, yes, sir.
It's corporate, so it'd read, if you could read that, Counsel.
Yes, I don't, essentially what you're doing is substituting, and that's the, that is the correct motion. Motion to substitute the funding source from what is proposed in the amendment for a, from the unappropriated fund balance of the corporate fund, instead to substitute from the existing funds in the cannabis line item. And we'll get the, we'll get the exact technical information from OBM to substitute the correct.
But that covers the, that covers the motion, correct?
Yes.
And I'm going to caveat on that, as long as the allocated funds are covered. Cannabis, because we do have allocation. I know we've already done the, even though Director McCarty said we, maybe it hadn't hit that yet. But 45,000's done with the home improvement. And the small business, 400,000, as long as there, I think the ordinance reads, if there's funds of up to 400,000, that could be used for businesses. So that's what, we'd have that caveat in that. As long as that's covered with cannabis, then we, that's what I'd be comfortable with.
Where'd Alderman McCarty go? I mean, Director McCarty.
Alderman Donlin?
Yeah, while, while he's coming up, I just want to be clear.
Keep giving him a promotion.
Just kind of, first of all, I want to thank everybody. This, this, this proves that this process works, having these discussions, flushing things out. I think we're headed towards something that's going to work for the city. But Mayor, you mentioned that a third of the 217, now do your math again, is, is what?
I hope I'm right.
It's about seven.
72,000.
It's about 70 grand.
Alderman Rep. Path, I don't see why, I mean, my personal opinion, I don't see why we couldn't commit at least the minimum that much tonight from the TIF fund because that's a third of the, what's being asked for. And then, as, as you're suggesting.
I just want to make sure we've got a consensus so we can get it through here.
I just want to make.
Well, I, I just think that, in all fairness, you know, Alderman Hanauer brought up the idea about, we've got a lot of good ideas tonight about where the money, money should come from. Alderman Fergensy, I appreciate that. But Alderman Gregory, I appreciate you having ears and a voice tonight. And, and I think we are moving forward towards a solution that works. And, but again, I think your idea of using the 72 whatever of the TIF fund makes sense.
And then the other two thirds from the, from the cannabis.
Right.
I'd like to be a sponsor of that organism too.
I would just.
So somebody needs to encapsulate what, what was discussed. Maybe that's you, Alderman Rep. Path.
Well, then I, then I think that we substitute the 217, 70 from the corporate fund, from the fund balance, divide that up to 72,000 of that come from the TIF. And the other two thirds of it, whatever that number is, comes out of, out of the cannabis money. That work, Bill?
Yep.
I think that's.
That was my land fair math.
We have enough to cover that.
I'm not going to stop.
Dominic?
That's the motion. I'd like to comment on the motion.
I, I did, I did want to come before you and, and get clarity. You know, black business, black business is very important to not only the mission of TSP, but the mission of the Springfield Black Chamber of Commerce. And not only are we looking at preserving history, but we're looking at trying to maintain our present. And so if this at any point is going to jeopardize funding that we're going to disperse to minority businesses or homeowners in War II, I cannot in good faith support taking, taking these funds.
It's not going to.
Yeah, it's not. We'll make sure it's based on the allocation.
We're good.
Okay, okay.
So is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Third.
Okay, discussion?
Yes, discussion, discussion. Discussion.
Yep, Alderman McMinim, then Williams.
Thank you.
So I can understand, and I can go along with using the cannabis money, even though if there's consensus on, with the five wards on the east side with the, and I don't see there's consensus with Alderman Williams, and I don't blame you at all. Because you're saying the cannabis money for the east side wards was meant to be dispersed, not just for one project. But now, as far as using some of the, the TIF money, and that's, excuse me, Alderman Donlin, that's your idea, but.
That was the mayor's idea.
Okay, but you're supporting it, and you're the alderman that said, "We're not going to disperse TIF money until the project is completed." And so I don't know how this fits in with that rule that, that you push forward through the ordinance process. And I don't think that stabilizing the basement is completing the project. It's, it's, and so I, but on a broader way, on a broader comment, I want to say that I completely agree with the efforts to try to honor and respect history. However, there's more ways to respect history than saving a building that is falling in. I walked that site yesterday carefully. It's been open to the elements for probably 10 years. And we're talking about a wood that was used 170 years ago to put it in. I, I don't see how any of that wood can realistically be used down the road. It's rotted, it's termite inf- infected, infested. And I think we've got like fool's gold working here. We've kind of got this idea of a building that's, that we think is gold, but it's a fool's gold. I think we've got to find different ways to honor that site. It's a beautiful site, it's a very large site. And I know you're shaking your heads, but I think we've got to spend money wisely. And I think there's more ways than one to preserve history. And I'd like to work on how we can best preserve history without spending so much money on what I think is, it's coming too late to save. So that's my opinion. But I'll vote for yes on the cannabis money if that's how you want to spend the cannabis money.
Alderman Donlin?
Yeah, just since, since part of your comments, Alderman, were directed to me direct. I, I did want to respond, and Alderman Gregory, you reminded me, and I, and I didn't remember this, that there's that, there was the ordinance that passed with the money to come after the fact, once the project's completed. There's a 750 threshold. That's obviously less than this. I, I had forgotten that, it'd been a few years, 2017's a long time ago in this world. But anyway, I echo Alderman McMinim's comments. Let's get this moving along, and let's, let's preserve some history and do the right thing.
Call the question.
Alderman Williams? Yeah, Alderman Williams had a comment.
Oh, yeah, we're still in discussion. So I'm, I'm not going to hold this thing up, you know, I, I'm for this project. I, I do think War III somewhat taken a hit. So what I would say to you, Director, is this. So the aldermen are saying, "Oh, I'm going to pay you back, I'm going to pay". So this, this, we'll do it the way the ordinance is reading and amended right now. But in the future, I, so say, let's say, starting in 2022, with, with cannabis money, it, it gets split when it, when it comes for east side infrastructure and things like that. Three and two are going to have their separate pots.
And one.
And, you almost said it. No, two and three are going to have their, their separate pots because I don't want to go through this again, you know? If, if, if we're going to have to do that starting January 22, I know I'm stuck with getting through the, you know, this cycle and, and the money that's coming in because I do have residences that I'm kind of concerned that we're doing this, but I'm thinking we're going to, going to survive it, you know? But we had advertised, and we had put out application online, and people have applied, and people have ongoing processes in my ward. And War II is getting ready to take a, a big chunk of that, which really, in my mind, should just be his side of it, since his four is two and two. Okay, we're, we're close, you know, that type of thing, but that's all I want to say.
Any other discussion?
We're going to be split out.
Any other discussion, Alderman, Rep. Path?
Call the question.
Second.
Okay, all in favor of the amendment, right? Go ahead, of course, Counsel.
The amended amendment.
Amendment?
Yes.
The motion was for substituting or amending that pending amendment to include a provision to remove the reference to the unappropriate corporate fund balance to be used, but instead substitute cannabis funds, those to be reimbursed via the TIF and/or CDBG as it is eligible. Is that correct?
But a third of it goes, a third of it's TIF money.
A third of it's coming from TIF.
Yeah, 72,000.
Two thirds of the cannabis, one third of it's TIF.
Very good.
All in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay.
Nay because of the, the TIF spending. I don't see that our rules permit it.
Call the question.
Second.
Moving second to, for passage as amended, any discussion on that? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open.
I want to be listed as sponsor.
Got it.
You still need to hit yes.
And the ordinance passes seven voting yes, one voting no.
Okay.
I think that concludes the, that portion of the city council meeting. Is there any unfinished business coming before the city council? As a reminder, I know, you know, we're in the flu season again, and COVID's spiking up. We just encourage everybody to wear their mask, went around others, keep your distance, and continue to wash your hands. And, you know, it's personal preference, but I'd recommend, I'm not a big vaxer. My first flu vaccination was last year because I didn't want to roll the dice with regards to COVID. So I did get vaccinated with the flu, as well as COVID, didn't have any reaction to any of it. So I'd recommend going that route. But again, it's personal preference at this point. But at least mask up regardless. It proved it last year when this city council took a unanimous vote. And that sent the trajectory of the COVID cases declining downwards when we were seeing that escalation. So at least wear a mask. Is there any new business coming before city council?
Mr. Mayor?
Alderman McMinim?
We had an outstanding Christmas parade on Saturday night. Many of our city departments participated in it, fire, public works particularly, I think economic development and some other departments. And then we had other local governments that participated, including the mass transit participated. We had a band coming out from Lincoln Magnet School that was involved. And we had even Auburn band came up from Auburn High School. And so it was mostly, a lot of people contributed to that, and it was really wonderful. So that's new business number one, just to commend those that were involved. And then, including all the folks that set up the parade route, you know, ahead of time. That's all public works folks that do that. And on a different comment, Mayor, when COVID first hit, we had someone from city that would attend the county meetings regarding COVID activity. And it was the fire chief at the time. Do we have someone going over there currently now that we? We had an incredible number of positives on last Thursday reported, over 200 positives in a single day. It's very significant. And, and by the way, it does not include all those persons that are getting off the shelf, testing for themselves. They get, they buy it at CVS or Walgreens, they bring it home, and they test it on themselves. And if they're positive, that doesn't get added to the count that the county does because the county is only, county's only adding up those that go to the county site typically. So, so the question is, do we have someone going over to the county health department to kind of keep track of what they're doing over there?
Yeah, it's still with the fire department, I think Ed Canny or the chief go, but they're not meeting like they had. You know, they were, when this all started, I think it was daily, then it went to weekly, and then sporadically. So I'll have them give them an update with regards to that. But the important one would be having public health or someone come back. The bottom line is, the reason we encourage mask-wearing vaccinations is we do not want to go backwards with closing any businesses, we're moving forward. I mean, we have to learn to live with this and move forward. So that's what we intend to do in that fashion. But again, it is a health pandemic, as you pointed out, and we don't have a public health department. And we'll try to get someone within there to come and give a presentation to the council.
And I believe that R.D. Lawrence was, is in the hospital right now. That's a kind of case in point. That, um.
I mentioned tonight. Alderman Fergensy?
Yeah, I, I just want to back up Alderman McMinim's comment about the parade Saturday night. I had a customer come in and she reported that everybody was happy, it was a great time. There were a lot of people down there enjoying it. And I want to give a shout out to Lisa Shivey. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other unfinished business or new business? I do have an announcement from LaShonda Fitch, Oak Ridge Cemetery Director. They're having an open house at Oak Ridge Cemetery for the only public indoor burial option in Sangamon County, which is the chapel. And that is open house tomorrow from noon to 1:30, Thursday from 11:00 to 12:30, and Tuesday from 11:30 to 1:00. And then, two individuals I'd like to recognize. First is Micah Miller, I think he's on first reading tonight for an appointment at one of our commissions, but also with the school district, so we appreciate you stepping up in that fashion. And then Julie Becker Benson, has been a stalwart with regards to people on the streets. And we can't thank you enough for continuing your mission to help those in greatest need. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
We count this as them coming up before the council so that they don't have to come back?
Oh, yeah, if you'd like to come up, and that way you don't have to come back next week or the week after with your appointment. So if you want to come up and say a few words or... That way you won't have to go through this again.
And miss all this? I just want to say thank you.
We could be the school board.
What's that?
It could be worse, we could be the school board.
Baptism by fire. Thank you, Mayor, council members. I anticipate a favorable vote. I've isolated about 45 minutes in every day that I can dedicate fully to this. So that should add up to quite a bit of time throughout the end of the year. It's a, it's a noble, noble service, and I'm really excited for it. I'm looking forward to being a part of the solution in the community. And I've got great people here to help work with, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I just want to say thank you for being asked. I appreciate it. I've lived in this town all my life, and my kids live here. My grandson goes to school here in the community. I've got my business here, which is going to be celebrating six years in January, going out on the street and helping our needy homeless population. My husband owns a business here, and I have a lot of vested interest in, you know, wanting this town to stay successful and, and keep going long after I'm gone. So I appreciate being asked, and I, I just appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
Thank you, guys.
Any other individuals wish to address the council? Is there a motion for adjournment?
Hold on, Michael.
Oh, sorry.
Cowboys.
Dallas Cowboys, did they win?
Uh, yes. Michael Williams, 2536 Columbus Circle, I just want to say, I was impressed with you guys today. Word in our community is you guys will never work to make things happen for us. I've seen some hard nos and some pleased, passionate yeses, and worked it out. Thanks to Mr. Fergensy who came up with the suggestion, and the hard talk between all of you councilmen to make that happen for us. There's a lot we need done on the east side, there's a lot. And there's going to be more projects that's going to come, and we might not quite make the third or the 50% and things like that. But Sean, you might have to go to the state and have them to change how that percentage works. Because we did talk to a guy from Chicago that says, and their TIF district, they don't have such a percentage. It's just that they, as long as you're eligible, you can get that type money. But I am impressed, and y'all really should be proud of yourselves for working this out, for actually looking at each other, keeping your hard lines, stating your hard cases, but then finding a common denominator. And Roy, there's going to be plenty of marijuana money. I'll untangle you and Sean. I'll untangle. I'll untangle you and Sean, I'll untangle you and Sean later on, but there's gonna be plenty, bro, of marijuana money and it's gonna be all right, it's gonna be all right. I'm proud of y'all, that's all I had to say.
Thank you. And is there Kendra in the audience? Yep, if you'd like to come up. Anybody else wish to address the council? You come up? And state your name and address for the council, we'd appreciate it.
Name is Jim Dickey, 520 South Second Street. I just want, ask for clarification because the original amendment on the, uh, project for Taylor Home was to take money from corporate reimbursed from either TIF or CDBG. Now, you, you amended it to one third from TIF, two thirds from marijuana, is the intent that the marijuana side would still be reimbursed from either TIF or CDBG?
That's correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's what you passed and agreed on.
Right. As the project progresses.
So that marijuana money is being borrowed, but will be repaid.
As long as the project moves on. Yep. Oh, yeah. Is there anybody else? If you'd come up and state your name and address for the council, we'd appreciate it.
Jermaine Jones, three fifths of all other persons, United States Constitution, this is directed to you, Mr. Corporate Counsel as well. Everybody have a telephone? United States Constitution, Article One, Clause Three, Section, Clause Two, Section Three, excuse me, that's Article One, Clause Two, Section Three. I'm reading from the Illinois Administrative Code Title 89, 300.130. This is when you take someone's daughter, a, a parent's daughter or son, we're not speaking about a minor or juvenile, everyone knows what someone's children or child is. So I'm speaking about a done, a son or a daughter, so I'm speaking of my daughter, I'm the dad. Written notices of decision, department provides a written notice to mandate reporters who have reported suspected child abuse or neglect, as well as to the child or the parent, personal guardian or legal custodian, the juvenile court, when the state ward, not ward a state, but youth in care. Governor Rauner, 2015. The alleged perpetrator concerning the final determination of the report be the mandate reporters, mandate reporters who have been reported suspected child abuse or the neglect of, or, or are the informed, written notice, written notice. A formal investigation was conducted. The written notice also provides the exam, the, the explanation of how further information indicated the report to be secured, department staff will be notified in those writings, the name of the child, the report of the, the rebuke of the abuse, founded, indicated or unfounded, temporary custody, you have six hours to contact the parent's father or mother, not contact the grandparents, this is just the law. Misprisoned felony, 18 U.S. Code Four, misprisoned felony, USC. However, having knowledge of the actual commission of felony connizable by the court and the United States concealed does not, does, does not as soon as possible make known the same or the sum or judge of other person in the civil or military authority under the United States shall be fined under this code and this title or imprisoned not more than three years or both. This is the law. Conservatives of the act, conservatives of the peace, you all have rights, you all have authority under the public act to file warrants on when, when state agents violate the municipal code and the ordinance on the property. That means in someone's home, that means in the driveway, that means on the porch, that means the street, that means the grass, this is the property of the municipal. It's you all, you all have rights to carry weapons, you all have authority to carry weapons, you all have authority to serve warrants. Public Act 90, Public Act 90, 0540, conservatives of the peace, you all have rights to serve warrants when agents violate the persons, the people. This is just the freestyle, corporate counsel, I welcome you to, once again, 750 ILCS 36, Article One, general provisions, definitions, that's 750 ILCS 36 slash 102. Application of Indian tribes, 750 ILCS 36 slash 103. Application of Indian tribes, 36104. The custody of determination made by court, C, A, B, C, D, A, B, C, 750 ILCS 105.
Sir, what we'll, uh, do is, I will schedule a meeting with Dan Wright, you know, this is a county initiative with regards to, uh, I think it's with regards to your daughter.
Yes, sir.
I don't know if that meeting's taken place previously because you've been up here before, so I'll get with Chief Winslow to make that arrangement and, uh, determine what the status is with regards to that.
They have cut me off, I have not visited, she hasn't, I have not seen my daughter since March.
But if you, uh, you have my number or one where to, so we'll touch base, uh, this week and then, uh, get that set up, okay?
Yes, sir.
Mayor?
Yes, Alderman Williams?
I, I would like for, uh, myself and Alderman Gregory and, and Pastor T Ray McJunkin to be invited to that meeting.
Okay.
Along with Mr. Jones, if possible.
Yes, sir. It's also welcome to the public.
Do you have his number?
Yes, okay.
It's also welcome to the public and this is by notice, it's also welcome to the public because we definitely seeking a warrant to serve custody, whether, you know, I mean, it's, there's not, there's, there's no right there, I mean, it's just not right. And we looking, we looking to move forward without those of authority because they took the initiative to serve and, and release the child and gave custody of her and returning it back to her and refused to look over it and they don't understand the laws. We've been looking to move in a posse comitatus act as well, sir, pos-, uh, corporate counsel.
And that's why we'll, uh, set up that meeting and have that discussion, so thank you for coming back and bringing it to the forefront. So we'll meet either this week or the first part of next week.
Thank you and that'll be in writing.
Thank you.
Appreciate your support and concern.
Is there a motion for adjournment?
So move.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. We're adjourned, thank you.